The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for May sixth, two thousand and twenty five is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature this year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings through June, two thousand and twenty seven. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform and is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in this hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Aiken.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, and Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. We'll begin with the building code cases scheduled for nine thirty a.m. First, we have case BOA one six nine six zero seven six with the address of four twenty one East Sixth Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
I have Michael Welsh here for the applicant in this case.
Please proceed.
So, this, the board approved the project. This is a project that we needed relief for the, to build a building taller than the buildings that are being demolished. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not sure if we actually need relief for this. There was a little confusion. This is just for the relief that's required because the roof decks have access hatches to be accessed instead of full-height head houses. The board has already approved the project and in working with Frank DiMatto at the Plan Examiner, there's one building, that one building code we've released that we need is for the not having the full-height head houses. And we have, I filed this appeal with the ZBA, and then Mr. DiMatto said that we don't need to go in front of the ZBA again. We just get to go to the State Board. So, the project is already approved. We're doing two phases. It's approved. We took the roof decks off to get the building permit issued so they can get started, while we appealed to the State Board for their relief for that. That's been filed with the State Board. But I just wanted to leave it on the agenda and, you know, get your thoughts in case you disagreed with that interpretation.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing, no questions from the board. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I guess I'll make a motion, a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge. Are you unmute, Mr. Stenbridge? I see you.
Apologize, Madam Chair. Yes.
You're on two devices, Mr. Stenbridge.
And I'm trying, I'm trying to get off one.
Understood, thank you. Okay, Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
At case BOA one six nine nine two five five with the address of three twenty Washington Street, if the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Doug Anderson with C three, Verentis. I was engaged last week on this particular matter. The ISD refusal letter, Dega, much, well, studies. The building code provision, which we don't feel is correct, but that being said, will let the board determine. This is an existing daycare which wants to now include infants and toddlers less than two years, nine months old. The building code classifies that as a group I four. You can see it right center on the plan, of the previous plan right there, right center. It says I community classification, I four, daycare. This is on the second story. We can see there's two means of egress off of this particular floor. The refusal letter cites a group E requirement, where this classification for infants could be classified as group E if you're at grade and each of the rooms has an exit directly out of the building. We don't have that here, so we are required to classify as group I four. So, we have no intention of asking to classify this as group E. So, that being said, I'll leave it up to the board whether to, whether they feel we need a variance for this or whether my, our interpretation on our side is in fact correct and negate the ISD refusal. However, however, the board determines the best avenue to get this resolved.
Questions from the board?
What are we asking, what are we being asked to approve? It's unclear now.
Doug Anderson, yes, that's a good question, Ms. Panado. The ISD refusal is assuming that we're trying to classify this as a group E educational use. Group E is typically grades, you know, K through twelve in daycare over two years, nine months. We don't have that here. We have infants and toddlers under two years, nine months, which is an I four institutional classification. We're on the second floor, and we have two means of egress. In other words, what is on this plan that we're seeing is fully compliant with the building code as opposed to ISD's interpretation of less restrictive classification. I believe that they are incorrect, but again, I guess you can either overrule ISD's refusal. I don't feel we need a variance, so I'm not sure what other avenue the board would wish to take on this other than affirming that our interpretation is correct.
Rowan, are you with us?
Yes, Madam Chair. So, I would suggest if you see fit to approve the suggested variance, even though counsel would like an interpretation, it sounds like.
Okay, other questions from the board? Hearing that, is there a motion?
A motion to approve. You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
No, I'm just not, I would rather they work it out with inspectional services instead of us being asked to sort of waive building code. It doesn't seem like the issue here is the conflict of kind of opinion between the two parties. I just, especially with the use with children, it's not comfortable, so no.
Thank you. Mr. Langham.
Uh, no.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Correction from the record, I am not counsel.
Thank you.
I'm a co-counselor. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the hearing scheduled for nine thirty a.m. And we'll ask at this time if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the nine thirty a.m. hearing. Hearing none.
We have, we have one hand up. One second.
And for which case is that?
Jim Cogan, do you wish to ask for withdrawal or defer?
For which, for which case, Jim?
Jim Cogan has his hands up.
Jim Catigan, are you here to request a withdrawal or defer? If not, can you put your hand down?
He's on mute.
Okay, I proceed.
So, with that, we'll move on to case BOA one six six three four two one with the address eight sixty nine Saratoga Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
I have, this is Michael Welsh on behalf of the applicant. Kid, okay, so this is a bit of a unique situation in that the permit application was filed under the previous version of the code for East Boston. We had an idea that the code was changing and tried to, you know, design it to be somewhere kind of in anticipation of what the code would be approved at. So, I have a little bit of an analysis that just shows the variances that are required according to the refusal letter, which is under the old code, and then also under the amended code, which would require fewer variances. But the owner of the property, Mo Seffi, and his wife have a child, and they have, their parents intended to come and live with them. So, this was designed to, three units for them to use for their family. The property.
Slides you want, are there slides you want to refer to as you speak? It would be helpful to help the ambassador know where to scroll.
Sure, right, so this one's fine now because I'll just explain what's on the current site, and then we'll go to the next one. Currently on the site, there's a single-family dwelling somewhat dilapidated. The structures on the adjacent lots are very close to the, you know, within one and a half feet of the lot lines, but not close enough where it could, it could be attached to them. If they could have been, could have been attached, then there would be no need for a side yard. So, that has to do with the side yard requirement. And as you can see, with the kind of house situated where it is now due to the width of the lot, there's no way to get off-street parking onto the property, and there isn't on it any currently. So, that's something that we wanted to address. If you go to the next page. So, this would be the proposed structure, which is, it's a four-story structure. The reason it's four stories is because the first story is to allow for a driveway that goes underneath with a, one parking space underneath the structure, and then two parking spaces in back, have one for each unit. And there's also an elevator, so there's a small elevator lobby so that, which the purpose of the elevator is to allow the parents to move in and be able to get up to the, in the future. If you go to the next slide, the exterior is a little, oh, this is a better, shows the parking a little bit better here in the elevator lobby that I was mentioning. So, again, this is the reason for it being four stories, also because the property is in a flood hazard district. So, elevating the first story of living space was also seemed to be a good idea for that reason. Can you go down to the next one? We'll see in elevator. So, these are, these are the units, again, first floor. It is just the driveway, the elevator lobby, stairs. And then each of the units has two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and a back deck, which is the second mean of egress. And then on the left, you can see that's, the intention is to utilize the existing basement of the existing structure just to have, put some of the mechanicals down there, as well as have some storage spaces. And the next slide.
Yeah, I'll be if I need you, I'll get you.
We did, we did, so through the community process, we did have discussions with the neighbor who would be to the right of this. And we have a revised plan. I don't know if it got to the ZBA, but we made some minor adjustments to this to allow on the first floor to allow there to be an alley between adjacent structure and this structure so that they can continue to use that to access their rear yard and storage of trash cans and things like that. And if you wanted to go down to the next one, we just see the other elevator, so the other, that's the rear, so that's the rear elevation there showing the decks, and it does have a roof deck. And I just, just to give you somewhat of a comparison, under the new code, the amended code, there would be no variance required for the additional lot area per unit. We would be compliant with the floor area ratio, and there would be no variance required for usable open space or for the minimum front yard. And because the new code doesn't, wouldn't require any parking spaces for a three-unit building, a three-unit building with no parking could be built by right, three stories tall. And he wants, they want the owners, they want to use this for their family instead of having it be just a, you know, a three-unit rental property because the units and the layouts and the lack of parking wouldn't work for them for their own family. So, they're trying to get this, you know, approved for, to have it for their own personal use as owner occupants. But the alternative would be to redesign it as a three-unit building, keep it as a rental property, and do that by right. So, those are the reasons that they are seeking relief from the board for the project. And to see if anyone has any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, a quick question. So, my understanding is that ask is that you were looking to eliminate one parking space from the properties that, for under the previously approved and under construction plans, right?
No, I think the, the existing, the plans all have three parking spaces, unless.
Okay, so I think, okay. Right, no more questions from me, I think.
Any other questions from the board?
Is this already under construction? No, this is, this is proposed, so there's, there's the single-family houses on the property now, so that would be demolished, and then this would be a new, a new building. All right, yeah, I guess I'm confused because the information we have from the planning department indicates that this must be a different project. So, I don't know if Jeff Hampton is here. I mean, this is just, seems to be what was presented from the planning department. This is eight sixty nine Saratoga, so it looked like it was just a waiver for changing one parking space. So, I don't think I have any further questions now. It just wasn't consistent with the information we also had.
Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services regarding eight sixty nine Saratoga Street. Our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including on a butters meeting held on Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four, which was attended by two constituents. The primary feedback from this meeting was some concerns from neighbors about construction vehicles and the setbacks being requested by the applicant, which the applicant did address in his changes just recently now. As explained, additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Association, which stood in opposition of the proposal, and they voted zero in favor and ten opposed. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the boards, Ben Shumpert from Councilor Court, as a part of this office. At this time, based on the Albany Law and Planning Spots in and community opposition, the council would like to put an opposition on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? With that, may I have a motion?
I see Bob Demeykow has his hand up.
Uh, Bob.
Ah, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob Demeykow, Transportation. And basically, I think three cars parked in this parking area causes concern from a BTV perspective because the curb cut's going to be required to be twenty feet because of the cars parking side by side. And twenty feet's a little bit too wide for a curb cut in this location. So, I'd like to recommend that they remove one space so we can have a curb cut of twelve feet and improve maneuverability. Also, I'm concerned about the exiting of a vehicle this close to the rear of the sidewalk. And I think an audio and visual alarm should be required to satisfy the Persons with Disabilities Act. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one, one more testimony. Luke.
Good morning, members of the board, Chairman, Chairperson. Luke Fandyweli, I'm the owner of eight six seven Saratoga. I am the abutter. Alarms and notifications outside my bedroom door, window is, is something of a little bit alarming. But as the abutter, you know, I live in a house on a twenty-five-foot lot, and my house is twenty feet, twenty feet wide. So, we have two and a half feet on each side of our property line. I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that this, this, this project being this close to my property line is appropriate. There are several variances that I raise concern as, as no relief for. The structure depth and the shadowing that will occur. He's got, I believe, twenty feet on his plans, plus the ten, ten feet for, for the stairwell will shadow my property considerably. My, my rear is south-facing, and the windows on the, are only on the rear and the front of my building. So, that's how the front of my house gets sun. The structure elevation in the rear, I don't know if you guys, if you all know, but my property is one off the corner, which is the corner of Westbrook. The Westbrook elevation and my yard elevation are, are the same, maybe slightly higher for drainage. And then eight six nine's elevation is about three and a half feet down. So, the concern there would be added square footage of this large structure. Where is this rain going? What's the retention plan? How is that going to be executed properly?
Of all kinds of other.
Thank you.
The area, I also have concern with the structure being built that close to a retaining wall. There is no plan to underpin, shore up. And I have, I just have more than a few concerns with the proximity to the property line, the depth of the building. I'm not really concerned with the height, but it is the depth. And by right, if this person has a right to build per, per the code and current zoning, I have no, I have no objection. And I do want to preface that as an abutter to this, the current property, I do welcome a family coming here. I'm not opposed to that. I, I want this person to have a happy home. I, I just don't, I just think it's impeding more than enough my own property.
Thank you. Ms. Weewell, did you have your?
Yeah, I just sort of want to get to the bottom of the discrepancy we have that I think Mr. Aiken and I noted. So, our information indicates that the only zoning relief is a variance for parking or loading. But I see on the agenda, the, there are, you know, a lot more sections cited for the zoning relief. So, I was wondering if Mr. Hampton could maybe answer some of our confusion.
No, I can't. I'm getting involved with it right now and trying to get an answer for you, but right at this second, no.
Okay, Madam Chair, I could make a motion if you felt that was appropriate, if anyone else had questions. I'm not comfortable voting on it without knowing exactly the relief we're granting, so I'll move to defer to a later hearing date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Uh, is there a, a date Caroline you could provide?
Yes, June twenty-fourth.
Okay, so we'll see the applicant then?
June twenty-fourth, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA one-six-six-one-three-five-five with the address of eighteen Symphony Road. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge, and good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linds with a business address of two forty-five Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Uh, with me is Nick Landry, who is the project architect. Uh, Madam Chair, if we could just scroll down to maybe, uh, slide three, just to give us a little bit of perspective here, yeah. So the proposal that's before the board is relatively straightforward and simple. Our, uh, petition seeks to change the legal occupancy from a single-family and congregate living at eighteen Symphony Road. We were cited for two items. First is G-Cod, because we are proposing, uh, to add parking to the rear of the building for two parking spaces, uh, and the G-Cod, uh, threshold was triggered based upon the addition of fifty square feet of paved area. Um, we have provided both letters, uh, including a no harm letter and the Boston Water and Soil Commission, uh, approval, uh, so we believe that a conditional use permit is appropriate under Article thirty-two. Uh, the second item, if we want to jump down to, um, maybe slide seven, just where the refusal letter is, um, we were also cited for screening and buffering, um, because of the two off-street parking spaces that we have. Article sixty-six dash forty, Madam Chair, uh, the board may be aware of this, uh, states specifically that it is intended to enhance the appearance of the Fenway Neighborhood District's commercial sub-districts, uh, and to ensure that the sub-districts are appropriately separated from adjacent areas. Um, because this property is located in the MFR district, that is not considered commercial. Uh, and our position is that the screening and buffering requirements do not even apply in this particular case. Uh, regardless, uh, we do include, and I can show that at slide, if we go to slide nineteen, uh, we do have the illustration showing what the, uh, specific parking layout looks like. I don't think we have any particular concern or issue with adding landscaping, uh, vegetation or fencing, uh, but I just want to point out to the board, uh, because it was cited in the refusal letter, that we don't even believe the screening and buffering applicability, uh, is, is relevant in this case because of, uh, the fact this is a residential district. Uh, with that, uh, I will point out, I know we do have the support of the Fenway Civic Association, which we did appear before and present this project to, uh, and just to confirm for the board on the record that this is not an extension of Northeast University's, uh, operations, uh, off-campus housing, uh, rather, this use would serve as a home for St. Paul's Outreach as an independent Catholic organization that's aimed at promoting full-time, um, uh, residential missionaries and student leaders, uh, who build communities of faith around college campuses throughout the country. Uh, SPO operates, uh, roughly in ten states, about eighteen college campuses, and they provide students with opportunity to continue, uh, with a Christian way of life while attending college. I just want to make sure that was clear for the record because I know that was a specific concern of Fenway Civic, uh, and we're, uh, happy to present that, uh, to the board on the record. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or adjust any comments, but I believe this is a relatively straightforward, um, presentation regarding G-Cod and interpretation on screening and buffering.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Uh, just to be clear, this building already has a lodging house license or something that allows congregate living?
Well, congregate living is, uh, a separate use than lodging through the chair, uh, congregate living isn't allowed use in the district, so, uh, congregate living would be the use, not lodging.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board members, good morning. Ciggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on September seventeenth of twenty twenty-four, at which no concerns were raised in relation to the violations that are before the board today. The Fenway Civic Association is in support of this application. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Simonelli?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Simonelli, Boston Rower Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other raised hands?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Minna Perez, representing the Carpenter City, and we want to go on record in support of this project.
Okay, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Apologies, Madam Chair, just one more raised hand, it's Brad Johnson.
Hello, Wood. Um, my girlfriend and I actually own the building next door, the top-floor unit, and I manage the building at twenty Symphony Road. Um, the only question that we have from the neighbors is, do these people know whether it's going to be just students that will be living there and is it undergrad or graduate?
Um, good, Chair, I can, I can answer that. I know this, this question has come during the community process. Uh, it's not just students living there, they do have, um, faith leaders who do also occupy the premises as part of the program, uh, so this, I believe the students include a mix of both grad and undergrad.
Thank you. With, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
There is a second? Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA one-six-nine-seven-eight-four-three with the address of one-seventy-five Newbury Street. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you, um, Mr. Stembridge, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you very much. It's, my name's Dennis Quilty, I'm an attorney representing the applicant for the use at the, uh, address of one-seventy-five Newbury Street. Um, the concept is to change legal occupancy from a retail, uh, use, which has been vacant for some time, to a, uh, cafe. Uh, with me this morning is Mr. Patrick Sue, who is the, uh, owner of the concept, which is Nana's Boston LLC, doing business as Nana's Green Tea, which is a proposed full-service Japanese restaurant and cafe, uh, limited to twenty-one seats inside, there is no outdoor seating. The, uh, operating hours are proposed to be eleven AM to eleven PM, seven days a week. Um, is, so again, it's a change from retail to restaurant, and we have gone through the community process, having, uh, not been required to do an ONS abutters meeting, but rather to flyer only, having met with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay, uh, on March third, who gave us a, a letter of non-opposition. And, uh, again, we're here to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board members, Ciggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office requested distribution of an informational flyer to every block within three hundred feet from the address in question, which solicited no comments to our office. The Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay is in non-opposition to this proposal. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Courage?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Samantha Courage, on behalf of Counselor Durkin's office. The counselor would like to go on record in support of the proposal. Now, the community group in our district, uh, sent a letter that they would not oppose the proposal, so that being said, the counselor is in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other raised hands? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
There a second?
That can't.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next is case BOA one-six-nine-two-nine-six-six with the address of eighty-one South Huntington Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Uh, good morning, Mr. Secretary, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Quilty Miller and Hanley, twenty-eighth State Street in Boston. Uh, good to be with you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Uh, if I may take you through this presentation, Madam Chair, um, and I believe the ambassador is pulling it up now. Um, so, uh, just some background here. Um, the applicant is Victory Programs, Inc., which is a Jamaica Plain, uh, based, uh, nonprofit, uh, service provider with fifty years of experience, uh, in working and assisting folks with homelessness and, uh, into permanent housing, uh, in the region. They are seeking to change, uh, the use and occupancy of the existing structure at eighty-one Huntington Avenue, I'm sorry, eighty-one South Huntington Avenue in Jamaica Plain, uh, to a homeless shelter use, for which it has been utilized since two thousand twenty-one, uh, originally as a hotel, uh, this is, was once the Envision Hotel, and prior to that, for many years, it was the Pond View Nursing Home, and with state funding, uh, it was operated for emergency accommodation. Uh, from two thousand twenty-one, it was acquired with city funding and participation and by a city contract with the Mayor's Office of Housing. Uh, they are looking to continue to provide services, uh, to, uh, individuals for a low threshold shelter use. Um, here with me is Sarah Porter, who's the president and CEO of Victory Programs, as well as Gabrielle Shelburne, who's principal with Studio G Architects. This is an internal change of use only, so there's no construction or expansion, it's just a use issue. Uh, also with us, which I think is important, uh, we've brought on to our team is Daniel Linsky, uh, from Kroll. He is a security and public safety consultant, uh, with, uh, spent twenty-eight years with the Boston Police Department, most recently as the superintendent-in-chief, and, uh, after that, helped to, uh, relaunch and expand Kroll, uh, with its security and public safety consultancy. So his depth of experience has helped us continue to, uh, process this with the neighbors and the city to make sure that it operates in compliance with the conditional use requirements. Next slide, please. So, um, I actually just covered this for you, if you go to the next slide, Madam Chair. Um, the location, uh, which you'll see here, uh, in the circle, eighty-one South Huntington, is in an institutional, uh, neighborhood institutional sub-district, uh, N-one VA-one, directly across the street from, uh, the VA Medical Center and just down the street from, uh, Mount Pleasant Nursing Home, and, uh, the headquarters for VPI is at four-oh-four South Huntington. So this is very much a local operation with, uh, hands-on, uh, management and oversight. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, I, I bring this up because the use, uh, the homeless shelter use, sorry, homeless shelter use is allowed, uh, at this location, subject to compliance with the conditional use permit requirements, not a variance. Uh, what is being requested is actually a change from one conditional use, uh, to the other, which helps to guide findings, uh, for compliance. Again, uh, previously a hotel from two thousand twelve, uh, to the pandemic, and prior to that, a nursing home use. The facility is entirely appropriate for this use. Uh, as I had mentioned, uh, we are proposing to continue to operate as an emergency shelter for individuals, uh, the hotel being set up as, uh, rooms, forty-one, uh, rooms, which will be, uh, repurposed for fifty-five, um, individuals. And so the facility is, is not just appropriate, but ideal for this, substituting the non-conforming hotel use, uh, for a use that is not more objectionable, and working through the neighborhood process that it's not adversely impactful to the neighborhood. We've had a very spirited discussion with lots of folks in the neighborhood. Uh, the standard isn't whether a homeless shelter is appropriate for this use, it, the question is whether it is managed by, uh, an established organization with strict protocols in order to operate responsibly, and that's exactly, uh, what VPI has done since two thousand twenty-one and what it will continue to do as guided through the community process. Next slide, please. So you'll see our refusal letter again for the conditional use permit, um, and in further compliance, uh, with, with the code, um, we have a series of, which you'll see here, our staff and training support, intake and placement procedures, uh, security measures, data collection, uh, security standards and twenty-four-seven onsite management. Um, with that, I would like to hand it off to Sarah Porter to tell you a little bit more about, uh, VPI and how they will run and continue to be a responsible operator at this location. Sarah?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Sarah Porter is muted. Hi, I'm Sarah Porter, I'm the president and CEO of Victory Programs. It's nice to be here with you. Could we flip to the next slide? I don't think that I can do it, yeah. This is a little bit, as, uh, Joe said, of who we are and what we do. Victory Programs has been part of the Boston community for just over fifty years. Uh, we do, we specialize in work of addressing issues of homelessness, addiction treatment and chronic health conditions. We operate just about twenty-seven programs throughout Boston proper. Uh, we operate drop-in centers, community centers, day programs, individual and family shelters, as well as permanent supported housing. We can move to the next slide. Um, as Joe had shared, this, these next group of slides relate specifically to the program that we operate at eighty-one South Huntington. We refer to it as Visions of Victory. Uh, we opened that program in November of two thousand twenty-one. There is staff onsite twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Staff includes a dedicated program director, program manager, a social worker, a team of recovery support specialists, case managers, there's a building supervisor specifically dedicated to that program, as well as a housekeeper. Um, the front door is locked, well, both doors, the front and the back, are locked at all times. Anyone who wants to enter that building has to be buzzed in by the staff through the front door, and there is a state-of-the-art security system that monitors both the inside and outside of that building. Staff do rounds in the building, kind of, you know, working with individuals who are living there, um, basically hour leaves throughout the entire building, as well as outside of the building between the hours of seven AM and eleven PM, to ensure both safety inside and outside of the building, as well as cleanliness. We can flip to the next slide. So in terms of the process of who is living in that building, as Joe said, there are fifty-five individuals that are living there now. Um, there is no length of stay, um, requirement, they stay until they move to permanent supported housing outside of that building. Sort of individual moves in, they go through a long intake process, they meet with the program director, they're referred through the Boston Public Health Commission, and before they even arrive, we've started sort of the collaboration process of getting to know them. Everyone goes through an orientation process, they review a program handbook, they review the rules more than once, the guidelines, really to help someone get accustomed into what, what life is going to look like while they live at Visions of Victory's. There are no guests allowed in, um, the program. If you have a guest, they need to be there for official business and they, they visit in the lobby. Um, if you've ever been in that hotel, it's still very, there's a front lobby area where they used to serve breakfast, that function still is our lobby. Individuals can come in there, um, if they're meeting with someone for benefits, if they're meeting with someone potentially through child welfare, if they're meeting with, you know, a, um, whatever service they're meeting with, it happens in that lobby. There are no guests allowed in individual rooms. There's no smoking allowed inside the building or in front of the building. There is in the back where the parking is, we have built a small kind of sitting area underneath the building, and that is where people are allowed to smoke. And people at this point only enter and exit through the front door. I will say, we, and based on some of the community feedback we've received, uh, during this process, um, we're looking at, can that particular policy change and can people exit through the back door as opposed to through the front and walking down the alley and smoking in the back and back up? So that is something we're looking at. We don't want to compromise safety of the building inside or outside, but we're examining that. So next slide. So just, uh, some of the outcomes that have happened in this program since November of two thousand twenty-one, two hundred and eight individuals have lived in that building, sixty-five people have graduated or moved into permanent housing, thirty-four people have moved into what we call transitional housing or. 34 people have moved into what we call transitional housing or non-shelter-based housing. 16 people have completed an inpatient substance use treatment program. 53 people have started medication-assisted treatment for substance use. 53 people have also engaged with mental health services and 60 people have started outpatient substance use services. We have a team of physicians that comes in and provides medical care onsite. Are able to start people as they, you know, are interested on medication-assisted treatment right at that service. We bank heavily on Victory Programs' network internally, as well as our broad team of external partners to really make sure we're meeting as many needs of individuals who are in there as possible, who are living in that building as we possibly can. Next slide. So as Joe explained, we have a pretty significant connection to Jamaica Plain. Our administration building is located right down the street at 404 South Huntington. We operate a program for families at 221 South Huntington. It is a family sober living program. Women who are coming out of substance use treatment, who are reunifying with their children, who are exiting the child welfare system at that program. They're living together for up to two years, securing housing and employment, stabilizing in their recovery. That program is here as well. We also operate the Jamaica Plain Recovery Center, which is on South Street, kind of at the other end of Jamaica Plain. It is a community-based program for individuals who are in recovery from substance use, from anything else. It's become quite a welcoming and successful piece of the community. Next slide. So in terms of some of our community engagement, we've done community engagement several different times around this process, both when we first moved into the program, before we purchased the program, and again at this time. We've also participated on an ongoing basis in community meetings, both in Jamaica Plain as well as Mission Hill. The project lives almost specifically on the line between those two communities. You'll see listed on the screen some of the community groups and organizations we've met with or been in touch with. We do have, I assume there's a slide coming of this. We have invited individuals into the program if they're interested in seeing it. We have a 24-hour front desk phone if people want to call the front desk if they have concerns. We also have an email where people are able to email in if they have concerns about what's happening in the community or in that program themselves. The next slide. So this is in response to some of the community feedback that we've heard over the past few weeks. We are going to be hosting community meetings kind of ourselves. The individuals, we will put the schedule out, individuals are welcome to attend. That will likely be a mix of in-person and virtual. Again, this is what I referenced before, urgent matters or non-urgent matters. People have access to Victory Programs staff who will respond in a timely manner. Next. And that's it? I'll hand it back to Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, go ahead.
Sorry, may I ask Ms. Porter?
Yes, ma'am.
The community meetings that you mentioned on the previous slide, so that's a go-forward in response to concerns from community or that's been ongoing? You know, the ones that we will be hosting monthly, that is starting. Okay, thank you. We've been attending, we've been attending other community meetings and now we will host our own in addition.
Yeah, Madam Chair, one thing I might note on that is the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, we are fortunate to have a pretty important, germane venue with them, with their public service committee that meets once a month. And it is actually charged with taking a look at issues of, you know, neighborhood crime and the like. And we were pleased to have a vote of support from the Neighborhood Council. But more importantly, that provides a really important and I think ideal venue for us to continue this discussion. And that's also why we brought on Mr. Linsky recently, that, you know, as we continue to operate, we want to make sure that we are listening to everyone and addressing things, not in a knee-jerk manner, but in an actual data-driven manner so that this can continue to be a resource for people in need in a responsible way.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I got one small question. It sounds like a pretty nice project, but what's, how they gonna maintain people from not gathering in front of the building?
Yeah, I can address that. So there's a, the staff who works in the building, there's a staff person who sits at the front door. And so as people come out, you know, there's a moment where people will come outside and just sort of breathe in the fresh air, the sunshine, and then maybe go around the back to have a cigarette or come back inside. So the staff are monitoring that on an ongoing basis. We did have a community member suggest it might be nice to put chairs up front and, you know, that there be an actual sitting area. We've chosen to do that in the back as opposed to the front, just so that we don't have a group of people who are kind of hanging out on the front porch. So the staff monitor it and move people along as need be. It's kind of a, there's a deep sense of partnership between the people who work there and the people who live there. It very much is a community in that building. Because people stay for as long as they need to, until they're ready to go to housing, people know each other and they live together, they work together. And so it isn't a, it's not a punishment or it's not a scolding of, hey, you can't sit here. It's, hey, don't forget, please come on and go around to the back, so. Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, two questions. I think for Ms. Porter to start. I understand this sort of low barrier to entry, low threshold piece there. Can you articulate, is there a certain point in time in which, you know, someone is no longer invited to live there if there are nuisances or other disruptions that are happening? And kind of how that's determined?
Yeah, so there are a few hard lines in terms of, we have zero tolerance for the dealing of narcotics in the program. That is a given and people will be asked to leave. Other than that, things are negotiated. As you can imagine, someone who is exiting street life after a significant amount of time, it takes a minute and so we work through conflict. We work through, you know, having not come home for two days and now you're coming back home. We work through having missed your case management experience. We work through having started substance use treatment and stopped substance use treatment. We work through all of that to help people succeed. There are people who have left of their owner board or there are people that have been asked to leave. We do not have a lot of very hard lines in order to help people have success. The one we do have, well, that's not true, we have two. One is around violence inside the program and outside the program, and the other is around dealing.
Thank you.
The second question is just a little bit more, maybe for Mr. Hanley or Sarah also. You've brought Mr. Linsky on board. How do, how does the, and that presumably is to help a bit with, you know, possibly nuisance problems or, you know, adverse impact.
Yeah. Can I start first, Joe, before you respond?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
So a couple of different things. So we've been in conversation with lots of members of the community for a good amount of time. Of course, as we've got ready for this hearing, that's intensified a little bit. And what is it, we're getting a good amount of feedback that people's quality of life has been impacted, that isn't necessarily reflected in the data in terms of police reports, in terms of three-room-one calls, which doesn't necessarily mean it isn't true. You know, I hear what people are saying. Someone's been very clear of, you know, I'm not reporting that my Amazon package or my Uber Eats was stolen. So I hear what you're saying, but I don't have the data. The data, kind of our experience has been different and the data has been different. And so therefore, we can continue to be in conversation, but at the same time, okay, well, not, let's not just depend on our tapes. Let's bring this expert on for a short period of time to see if he can, you know, bring something to light that we can address. We want to be responsive to what the community is saying, but it's complicated. Now, there's some conversation around, well, people are loitering. We'll call us and we will come get that person. But we don't receive the calls and so there's a little bit of bringing him on to help bridge that gap of, if there are impacts of people's quality of life, what can we do to help, what can we do to help or to ease that? Or what can we, how can we address that?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I think that my question was partially answered. I'd just like to sort of finish getting the answer to it. It sounds like Mr. Linsky is a short-term partner on the project. Is it not necessarily a long-term piece here? Well, you said, Sarah said something about it being, you know, perhaps short-term.
Yeah, and if I could just build on that question, you know, like the, there's a lot of comments around security and safety. So is there a long-term security plan component to it?
Yes, Sarah.
Yeah, so we have a security system that we actually just upgraded. The having staff onsite 24/7 is part of our security plan. We have only recently engaged with Mr. Linsky and so I can, I see you have your hand raised. But in terms of short-term, long-term, maybe I shouldn't have used the word "short-term" to express that, we kind of haven't gotten there yet. But the idea being if we need to be doing more despite what the data says, then this would be the key to that, so.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, if I could just expand on that. The other piece is so that we're indexing actions with results if we implement any changes. So from our understanding and experience, this has been a success since 2021. We've heard that from the Public Safety Committee, from the Neighborhood Group and other folks. And, you know, most recently, we've had more of a different discussion with some of the residential neighbors in the surrounding area that we want to be respectful of. And if you look at the correspondence, there is a series of items and requests that they've made for us to integrate, like a police detail and expulsion rules. And now, my client has 50 years of great experience. Pairing that with Mr. Linsky, what we want to do before we agree to things that may or may not serve the public good, we want to make sure we're doing it in a scientific and data-driven way. And so that's entirely what drives this. And Mr. Linsky is obviously a great fit for that and that's compliant with the conditional use permit requirements as well.
So before we briefly hear from Mr. Linsky, I just wanted to follow up with another comment that Ms. Porter had made about, you know, hard lines. You had mentioned zero tolerance for drug dealing. So what about drug use? No, there is not a zero tolerance for that. We work with people around that. Okay. Mr. Linsky, briefly, and I know we have raised hands, so I just want to make sure, we did get a lot of emails. So if there are folks who want to speak, I want to give them a chance to do so. So briefly, Mr. Linsky, what did you want to add?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. So my contract is actually phased. There's an initial contract to go in and see what the current situation is, what the current quality of life issues and concerns are at the facility and in the surrounding locations. And then to look at the current security programs, policies, procedures, staffing, supplemental programs. And my job is to develop an initiative that takes care of any issues in quality control programs. Then the third part of my contract is to have an ongoing relationship for time afterwards where I'm assisting and responding to issues and concerns around this. I've got 28 years with the Boston Police Department. I know folks are saying outside consultants, but I've got a lot of relationship with community members and have been involved in a number of projects, both as my former role overseeing law enforcement with Ed Davis in the City of Boston and also in my consulting role. I've worked in Jamaica Plain to site cannabis locations and other locations around the city where there's quality of life issues and concerns. And my job has always been to work with the neighbors to address them, to be responsive and to make sure we're not missing something and seeing it with our eyes and missing the neighbors who are there 24 hours. My job is hopefully to not receive phone calls from people, but I'm more than willing and able to take phone calls and to respond whenever necessary as issues come up.
Are there other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a question. So you've been operating at this site since 2021. Can you give a ballpark of maybe number of complaints you've received from the community and maybe an instance where you did receive a complaint from the community and steps you took to address it or how it was handled or resolved?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Sarah. Yep.
One of the earliest complaints we've received, which is kind of a unique story. So when the project first opened, there was a Boston police detail parked out front. And this, one of the earliest pieces of community feedback we got was asking us to remove that police car. First, there was a, the light on the top was kind of going 24/7. And second, they felt that it was stigmatizing. That was the first, that's an easy thing to comply to. You don't have to ask me twice to move the cruiser out of the front of our building. We have, I mean, Joe referenced what he called the public service committee. We've been an active participant of the, what we call the, or what is called the Problem Properties Committee of the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Group. We attend that monthly and will talk through any, you know, issue that has come up as, you know, somebody, if there were, was a syringe found, if there was someone who was complaining about people being, you know, loitering in their property. So we actually do daily cleanup around the building. We've done it for a long time. We've escalated it, of course, in light of, you know, some of the more recent conversations. Over the past week, we've done a good, solid, kind of pretty big two-block. We've spent two hours every day during that two-block and we picked up eight syringes. So that's a little bit of what we're talking about, about we want to be responsive, but sometimes the data is not there, kind of referencing what the feedback is we're getting. We also do that in the Mass and Cass neighborhood and to create like a parallel. In that same time period of a week, we picked up 331. So I'm not saying that even one is okay, but to, that's a way that we've been responsive and sort of, you know, are looking to document what it is people are talking about and what it is people are experiencing. Is that helpful?
Yeah, thank you. I think, you know, working in zoning, I think there's always sort of issues, but we can't do anything about it until people file a formal complaint. So I would just encourage everyone to sort of keep that in mind and that's sort of the best avenue forward. So no, that's my question. Thank you for your.
Ms. Weewall, thank you for that because, you know, one of the things that we've learned in this process and as Sarah indicated, you know, there are strict good protocols and experience that have been utilized. So this is both backwards and forward-looking. We're not just saying that, oh, we'll come up with this if we're approved, right? But having said that, from the data standpoint, as you said, we only know what is brought to our attention or what we're out seeing, right? So through the more recent outreach process, you know, we were informed that there's been an uptick in crime as a result of VPI. We researched the district police records and that is not at all the case. There were only a few complaints that were registered with police reports and none of them had anything to do with anyone at the shelter. Now, as Sarah says, that's not to suggest that something else isn't happening. And then enter Mr. Linsky in our strong commitment, which we are encouraged to do by the Neighborhood Council, which voted to support this, to say, we want you to have continued discussions. We can always get better, right? And that's what an organization with good personal experience will do.
Let's open it up to public testimony. I would like to make sure I hear from our butters as well.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Some background information, the community process, ONS had done in a butters meeting on March 31st. It was well-attended. In that meeting, there was a variety of opinions expressed. There were many who spoke in opposition and expressed concerns regarding an increase within what they felt was loitering, discarded needles in the neighborhood litter, antisocial behavior tied with public safety. There are also residents who were neutral to the proposal and residents that also spoke in support, seeing that they did not see an increase in crime. We are pleased to hear that the applicant, Victory Programs, has pledged to do ongoing community meetings monthly going forward, providing residents an opportunity to speak directly with staff and raise specific concerns. They've also, the applicant has met with the JPNC, the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, and secured their support. They also received support from State Rep Montano as well. We've received 15 letters in opposition from residents, some of them immediate butters. We've received two letters in support. But to reiterate, we are in support of the proposal due to the critical services that they provide to unhoused residents, unhoused members of Boston. And we are pleased that they're making steps to work more closely with residents to address specific concerns. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like we have seven people testifying.
Let's try to get through as many of them. Please speak briefly and add new information.
Yeah, I don't know if you have, you may have elected officials to speak too. Sorry.
I don't hear any, so if they come, they come, Mr. Hanley, but I want to make sure we get to the residents.
Yes, sorry, the City of California.
Sorry, this is. This is, oh, this is, go ahead then.
No, no, you're the state rep. You go first, I think.
So this is State Rep Sam Montano. My legislative aide, Carlos Rios, actually worked for my predecessor, Nico Elagardu, who had been very involved in the.
who had been very involved in this project as well. He has said that in the past, Victory Programs has been incredibly supportive and responsive to the community. He sees that trend continuing. I have also seen Victory Programs be responsive to the community. We have a housing crisis. I'm sure the ZEBA is very much aware of our housing crisis. And so I cannot see any opportunity to turn down access to housing, particularly for folks who need supportive services, which is what this program will become. And so I encourage you to approve it. I understand that there are hesitations from the neighbors and the butters, but we need to address the housing crisis. And if folks have nowhere to live, they're going to continue to be on the streets, and we're going to have other complaints stemming in, right? So it's the chicken and the egg, but at this time, I can see no reason why we should not approve more housing opportunities for folks, particularly folks who need supportive housing. So I urge you to approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Councilwoman Weber, are you?
Yeah, thank you very much. My name's Ben Weber. I'm the City Council for District Six, which includes the Envision Hotel. I'm here to just express my support for the conditional use permit for 81 South Huntington. As the state rep said, you know, we've got people who are experiencing homelessness and addiction, and this provides necessary support for them. Victory Programs have been providing services at this site already for a lengthy period of time. And my understanding is that this conditional use permit will allow them to provide longer-term housing for folks. You know, I frequently drive, walk, and run by this location. I don't see people gathered outside. I've been to, inside the building, spoken to Victory Programs. And, you know, I think there are legitimate concerns from neighbors. There are people who have substance abuse issues who are going in and out of the building. They're not loitering outside the building. There's, you know, you don't see the kinds of things that, you know, you'd be worried about in this kind of situation. And I'm encouraged that Victory Programs is promising to engage with the community regularly and have community group meetings. I'm happy to participate in those to make sure people's concerns are addressed and that we have good partner in Victory Programs. But I support the.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, we'll go into the testimony. Mr. Shadri, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'm here representing the owner of the property across the street from the proposed project. The project.
For the record?
I'm sorry?
The name of the, what is the address that you're speaking on behalf of?
So my client owns the property at 82.
South Huntington?
It's 46 to 80 South Huntington Avenue, which is directly across the street. It contains 107 rental units. So there are approximately over 200 people living there. My client purchased the property in 1968 and has rehabbed it and maintains the property. And we have noticed there is now a history that we can work from in that this use was actually an existing use from a hotel use. So that there is now a history. This isn't something we're looking to do. This is something that already exists. My client has provided through email some testimony from the unit owners. There is pictures of people loitering in our lobbies. There are needles in our lobbies. And this is a commendable use, and my client is very interested in working with the city.
Come on, you shithead.
Pardon me?
Please do not speak if you are not called upon. And please mute them, Fabio. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my client is not interested in stopping the project per se, but they do have to protect their interests and would ask the city to conform to the law. Currently, under Section 6.3, which is the conditional use provision of the statute, and I'll quote, "In the case of a substitute nonconforming use under Section 9.2, such substitute nonconforming use will not be more objectionable nor more detrimental to the neighborhood than the nonconforming use for which it is substituted." As was testified, the current use is under a conditional use permit for a hotel. That use was entered, had an agreement, by the way, with the neighborhood that was entered into the record as part of the conditional use. And so this seems very clearly to me to violate the very provision of 6.3A, which says you cannot substitute a use of a nonconforming use from a nonconforming use, which is more detrimental or more objectionable than the conforming, not already existing nonconforming use. My client has proposed to the applicant a list of conditions that they would like to see made as part of this decision if it were granted by this board.
Please speed up. We have other applicants, other speakers.
Okay, and section 6.4, it allows for conditions to be applied to a conditional use permit. And for that reason, we ask that it be denied. And if granted, that the conditions my client has proposed be attached.
Thank you. Fabio?
Can you?
Next, we'll hear from Julie Crawford.
Hello, my name is Julie Crawford. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the zoning board. This is my first time testifying, so thank you for this.
Okay, but just residents, are you for or against, and why, briefly?
I am for the project. I live in Jamaica Plain over on Union Avenue, which is not a butter exactly. But my son and his wife, both doctors who could not be here today, live very near. And they have two boys that I frequently walk and bike with in the neighborhood. And we go by that property frequently with my seven-year-old and 10-year-old grandsons. And it has not been disruptive. No one has ever bothered us. I don't see people loitering in the times that I happen to be going by. The need for this type of housing is so critical. I have had the opportunity to help someone who lives in our neighborhood but is unhoused. He's been unhoused for as long as I've known him, four or five years, and we've helped him in a variety of ways. And Victory Programs did come to his aid and provide this type of housing for him, and it makes all the difference in the world. There are people in our communities that we need to look out for, our neighbors who have not had the good fortune that the rest of us have had. So I urge you to support this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sam Rogers.
Hi, yeah, Sam Rogers. I own a unit over at 30 Jamaica Way. I actually recently moved out of the property. A couple of things that I want to be sure to call out. We received a letter from Sarah Porter on May 1st, directly conflicting with her testimony expressed here today. To read a quote from that letter, "Zero tolerance policies and curfews are not consistent with the work done every day at Victory Programs." Also add, 311 reports have shown a drastic uptick in needles found within a quarter mile of the property. 2019, there were four 311 reports for found needles. In 2024, there were 44. We are not against helping the homeless, but Victory Programs has essentially chosen to operate this as a free-for-all. We've experienced litter, loitering, stolen packages, car break-ins. I think it's important to note that the state police covers Jamaica Way, which obviously is property immediately butts. So all of the claims that the city police have not encountered an uptick in crime doesn't account for state police reports. We tried very hard to work with Victory Programs. We gave them a list of many, many points to try to go for a better managed operation, and virtually all of them were declining. I urge the board to reject this proposal until we can work with Victory to establish parameters that everyone's comfortable with. This is obviously something that we need in our community, but we need to have parameters under which this is operated. And the way in which it's been done for the past four years is simply irresponsible. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Jim Cadigan.
Jim, are you there? Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Sure.
Okay, hi. I just want to point out that over the last three and a half years, things have never happened prior to that. I've been an owner there since 1980, all right, when I was a kid, all right? Since 1980, we've never had the problems that we have been having in the last three and a half years. There are plenty of needles everywhere. Just last week, for example, I went up and down the Jamaica Way, that entire block of the Jamaica Way, and then back up on South Huntington, trying to get petitions signed. Every single unit I touched said that they had either needles on their stoops or in, and in their hallways, all right? These are needles and syringes and stuff like that. So this is not just something that's happened in the past, but continues going. And the three or four times that I've walked from the Veterans Administration Hospital to Muriere Pot in my place, I've gone by and there's been the sidewalk right in front of 81 South Huntington, there have been groups of people and drug dealing, okay? Actual drug dealing on the sidewalk right outside of South Huntington. Also, there is, we've got people that have actually filmed drug deals going down in Craftston Way, which is right next to 70 Jamaica Way and 81 South Huntington. All right, there's so many things that have been going on, and it's just like we're waiting for the ax to fall. Some of those things, break-ins, both in the house, the porch pirating, the breaking in and breaking of windows and cars, et cetera, et cetera. Not, and culminating in October with a shooting where a person got killed. Eight shots were fired. And we're just sitting around waiting for the ax to fall, it seems like. There are other locations, there are other locations, like in Long Island, which is just off of Quincy, where they had these facilities for the homeless, for unwanted mothers, et cetera. And they are in the process of rebuilding that, and I'm sure there are other locations. The main thing is, when you started this, okay, when you started this. Okay, when you started this, this was supposed to be temporary. We promised it was a temporary housing, and now you're trying to make it permanent. This is not fear to all the people who invested in that area.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Christian Brunelli. Mr. Brunelli?
Keep going and circle back.
Okay, next, we'll hear from Michael Reskine. Michael? Okay, let's move on to Nora.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Nora Lutz. I'm with the Mayor's Office of Housing, Neighborhood Housing Division. MOH is supportive of this project, and the appeal in front of you today, which is a step towards the project end use as permanent housing. Our office is working closely with the proponent and our colleagues at the city and the state to move this project towards its final use as permanent housing. Thank you.
Joan White?
Yes, my name is Joan White. I live at 40 Jamaica Way. I actually want to say that I oppose the use of occupancy, the continued use as a homeless shelter. This is not the, I've lived here for 20 years. And just in these conversations, the impression is that the community does not support the initiatives of supportive housing. I do, but Victory Programs has been disingenuous at best from the get-go. When they say they talk about community outreach, I had no idea. I've lived here for 20 years. I had no idea that this was being converted from a hotel, and as the previous commenter had said, it was temporary. And it was at the middle of, it was just started COVID. There was going to be no restrictions. They didn't have to have any curfew. The people that were going to be living there, they didn't have to have any vaccines, nothing like that. There was nothing to the community to say, hey, here's how you can keep yourself safe. Here's how we can deal with this. There was no outreach to the community that I was aware of. So that being said, the other thing I just want to say is that during this time, they are purporting that there have been no, that they are looking at the data. And I find it to be really rich that people that do not live in the community or people that live in Jamaica Plain that run by here, that happen to walk their dogs or whatever, they haven't seen anything. They're not here at night when you have to park your car on the street and walk to your place of where you live. So it creates a dangerous situation. There have absolutely been instances of loitering, of theft, of people defecating and vestibules, and personal feeling, fearing for my life as I am living in this community. So that being said, that has changed dramatically in the last 20 years. I don't believe, it was originally said it was going to be converted back to the Envision Hotel after two years. We all wanted to support it, but now we do not support the impact that it has on the community. I feel again that Victory Gardens, Victory Programs, has put a bow on this situation, and that is not in fact the facts. We are actually living here, going, dealing with this on a day-to-day basis. So the fact of the matter is, we have not called the cops. Who wants to call the cops? These people are already in a desperate situation. We don't want to call the cops. So that's why the data doesn't support it. But I'm telling you, the anecdotal data does. So you have several members of the community that are saying all these things are going on, and the fact that people are circulating the building during daylight hours and they don't see anything should not erode the actual impact of what the residents are feeling on a 24/7 basis. There are no curfews. People can come and go as they please, and it needs to be redirected as a different type of supportive housing, whether it's domestic violence survivors, whether it's people that have lost their housing, but not as a homeless shelter.
Thank you. We have a lot of raised hands, so I'm going to ask for us to please be brief so we can get to as many as we can.
Okay, we'll next hear from Cynthia Lewis.
Hi, good morning, members of the board. My name is Cynthia Lewis, and I've lived at 50 Jamaica Way since 2014, and that's located two buildings down from the Envision Hotel. When I moved to the Jamaica Way, the area was safe and welcoming. It was a pretty vibrant community, but that changed when the city made the decision, without any public notification, to convert the Envision Hotel into a temporary homeless shelter. It felt like the city used a lingering pandemic as cover to quietly bypass any community input, engagement, and accountability. And to date, the city has shown utter disregard towards very residents who would be most directly impacted by the proposal on Jamaica Way and South Huntington. Upon the conversion as an official shelter, a police detail was assigned to the envisioned property. That detail has made a difference, and it curbed many of the most dangerous behaviors of what has now been attributed to this particular shelter, drug dealing, use needles, public harassment, and trash accumulation. But once that police detail was removed, everything began to immediately deteriorate. Since then, I personally have been verbally and sexually harassed multiple times over the years by shelter residents. I've been followed while walking my dog, shelter residents. One shelter resident even threatened to eat my dog while I was out for an evening walk on South Huntington. I've been threatened walking down Craftston Way and have had trash thrown at me from a window by someone from inside the building. Because of these experiences, I no longer feel safe walking alone on South Huntington Avenue or Craftston Way, something that no resident should have to say about their own neighborhood. When I tried to bring these concerns to shelter staff, I did so calmly and respectfully, but I was not met with concern, but actually with open hostility by the shelter staff. I was yelled at and told to go home, little girl. That is a direct quote. It's important to note that Victory has had since 2021 to address the multitude of concerns that have been raised by Jamaica Way and South Huntington residents and have chosen to remain silent. Their efforts now seem purely performative. As someone has mentioned earlier, in October, there was a shooting near the shelter. While it may or may not have been directly connected, it reflects a larger pattern. Since the shelter opened, we've seen a surge in drug paraphernalia, open-air drug dealing, trash and rotting food on sidewalks and stoops, and a disturbing rise in aggressive belligerent behavior by both shelter residents and staff. What has happened is the rapid degradation and destabilization of our neighborhood. Every time I personally voiced concerns to Victory Programs, or more recently, the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, I have been met with platitudes, gaslighting, and thin-leafed condensation. condensation. I and other women in our neighborhood have been dismissed as emotional, judgmental, or exaggerating our fears, and let me be clear, our fears are not imagined, they are based on lived experience, and they are grounded in reality, and it's unacceptable to treat anybody, especially women, in that manner. I'm furious about how this process has unfolded, the blatant disregard for residents of Jamaica Way and South Huntington is revolting. Shame on the Mayor's Office, shame on Victory Programs, shame on everyone who has forced this shelter into our neighborhood without transparency, without community engagement, and without due process that's required by law. This is not how a city should treat its residents, this is not how public policy should be made, and I urge this board to do what no one else has done thus far: listen to the people who live in this neighborhood, and take our safety and our voices seriously, and vote against this proposal.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the remaining speakers to limit their comments to one minute, otherwise I'm going to have to limit the number of comments remaining, so please be brief.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll go to Jerome Parker.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Jerome Parker O'Grady. I live at 50 Jamaica Way, a couple doors down from the shelter. I've been here since 2009. I was going to talk about the same things I talked about at the Community Process Meeting and the JPNC hearing, like the shelter's adverse effects, but frankly, I'm exhausted, I'm just exhausted with this need to continually fight to protect my neighborhood from being treated as expendable, exhausted by the pretense of engagement when these decisions are already predetermined, and just exhausted by a process that consistently dismisses our genuine concerns, labeling us as NIMBYs simply for caring about our community's safety and quality of life. So just this morning, I had to do a needle report, and I separately had to call 911 because shelter residents were yelling and tearing through the trash out in front of my building and just generally creating a nuisance. As far as the needle reports, Sam and Jim both spoke about this extensively, but in the three years before the shelter opened to the three years after the shelter opened, within a quarter mile, it's a 209% increase in needle reports and an astonishing 573% increase if you narrow that down to 250 yards around the shelter. Data isn't anecdotal. You can look at the evidence yourself, the website, ma, needles311.surge.sh. And Victory Programs has claimed community engagement, but their actions have shown otherwise. Decisions have been made behind closed doors, communicated to us only afterwards, and proposals like hiring a security consultant feel like a public relations gesture rather than a sincere attempt at collaboration. We've been offered placation rather than partnership. And adding insult to injury, the city itself enabled this by funding it with a loan that purchased at double the assessed property value, 15.75 million against an assessed 7.68 million, a process that was completed with no public input, raising troubling questions about fiscal responsibility and transparency. Now, as residents, we're left to ask whose interests are being served here when citywide crime reports trend downward, but our neighborhood sees flat or even a slight increase in crime reports over the same period, coinciding with the shelter operation. We're not reassured by general statistics and dismissals of our experiences here, and whether these outcomes reflect underpolicing or genuine disparities in safety, they point to a neighborhood being left behind and not one being served. I'll try to, I'll wrap it up here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So again, please be brief or put your comments in the chat. I for one have read people's comments by email, so new information or just state whether you're for or against.
Okay, we'll go to Najim Kay.
Yes, good morning. My name is Najim Kabir, 50 Jamaica Way. That's the building right next to 81 South Huntington. I've owned there for almost 30 years now. I'd like to oppose the conversion because as the building directly impacted by this proposed change, we've really noticed a huge decline in our quality of life during the time it's been a temporary shelter. Rising violence, rising thefts of packages, open drug use, use needles everywhere, trash everywhere around the neighborhood, and all these issues we've never seen before in this neighborhood and clearly directly the result of this temporary change from a hotel to a homeless shelter. This is undeniable. I mean, it's declined, and while Victory Programs qualifies it as a success, if you live in the neighborhood and the building's next to the shelter, it's been disastrous, and you heard it from other members of the community. The important thing to remember is that, in reality, the owners, the management of the facility, while they may have the best intentions, have no control over what their residents do once they step out outside the building. And that's where the real problem is. It's us, the residents of the neighboring buildings, that are left to deal with these consequences and the decline in safety. There's been a petition that's been signed by many residents, over 150 signatures and rising to voice concern and opposition.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask other folks who have a lot more they want to say to put it in the chat, because we do have 20 more cases beyond this, and, you know, I think we have a good sense of the concerns that are being raised by residents, and I will give the applicant a brief opportunity to respond and open it back up to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to focus very briefly on some of the statements about the neighborhood engagement process, as well as Mr. Shadray's comments on Article VI compliance. So throughout this process, there has been extensive outreach. We had a, when the shelter first went in under the hotel, there was organized meetings. We had advertised meetings with Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, which we flyered the entirety of the neighborhood as required. We had an abutters meeting hosted by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, also flyered, and most recently, Mr. Shadray, representing the Moscow family that has the apartments across the street. Sarah Parker met with them last week in person, along with other neighbors. We did receive a list of requests or demands, if you will, from them, and some of them do not pertain or are not applicable or would not work with respect to how to properly operate this type of facility, and that's why we brought in Mr. Linsky to help us continue that dialogue that has been pretty robust to date, but in a more meaningful way rather than, as Ms. White indicated, anecdotal. With respect to the police calls in Boston, we are not on the J-Way, we are in the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood. If you call 911, the PPD is the call center that answers, the state police or highway police on the Jamaica Way. Having said that, as I think we heard, there are not, the neighbors aren't using that venue, so we have set up a hotline, which we'll be working with through Mr. Linsky's guidance, and we have committed to continue to work with the neighbors, much in the same way that we already have. Finally, for Article VI, I just want to say, if you take a look at the PPD recommendation of support, it does a really good job going through the factors for the conditional use permit. Article VI doesn't say, well, the type of use, if it's detrimental, it can't be approved. If that was the case, nothing would be approved. It's the operation of the replacement use, and that is something that is compliant in a way that is managed properly by an experienced operator with continued dialogue with all factors involved. So thank you.
So can you respond to the feedback about the Jamaica Way? So if a call is coming from the Jamaica Way address, does BPD respond to that, or is that state police?
Yeah, I think Mr. Linsky can probably provide more detail.
That's what, yeah. The concern that's coming from there.
If the call is to the residents, then Boston Police would handle it. If it's the area behind it, then state police would handle, obviously, the Jamaica Way. In any event, we can make sure we're cooperating and getting information from both the state police and Boston Police, and make sure that they're talking to each other, that if there are concerns and issues, they're jointly trying to address it. I have relationships with both organizations that are in that area.
And can you just provide some feedback around the concerns? You know, a lot of the concerns sound like early morning in the evening, you know, when other people who are passing by are not, you know, around, right? It's who lives there. So I guess maybe hearings, a little bit about thoughts on how to work on those, you know, hours.
That's what we have to look at. Where are the challenges and problems coming from? Are there something we can do with technology? Are there cameras and lighting that can assist and make people feel safer and secure? Do we need to have personnel outside doing perimeter checks or, you know, doing neighborhood walk and talks to see what's going on? Do we need to coordinate with Boston Police to see if they are able to swing some resources by, maybe have somebody get out of the vehicle and do a code 19 during hours when people are going back and forth? It's important, if people feel that they haven't made these calls because they, you know, they don't think anything's going to be done, it's important to really call 911 so we can see what the data is, so we can respond to it. I used to go to community meetings and get my cellphone out, and Mayor Menino would think I was crazy, and essentially, I said, "Mayor, well, people who have problems will call, I will work hard to fix their problem, and then we don't have a problem anymore." So we want to have that data and information.
Can I hear from other board members? Any questions from the board?
The concern being pointed to that the project actually, I'm trying to say, spans two streets, two, in terms of the Jamaica Way and Huntington Avenue, probably means that the reactions need to be raised to a higher level in terms of what Mr. Linsky referred to, specifically the state police and the Boston public and the Boston Police Department need to be more involved, have a better plan of working with and listening to the residents so that these things don't keep occurring. We've had the state rep and the district city counselor on this call, and I would think that if it's not Victory Programs itself or the residents, would take it right to those people and demand that they work on this issue. Yes, this is an important issue in terms of trying to relate to helping people, but it needs to be reinforced that it just can't go on if, in fact, what we're hearing is the case, for sure.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? If, I don't know if Mr. Aiken, you're trying to speak or?
Sorry, I'll have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I read the comments on via email, I heard what the residents have to say on support our position. I truly believe that this program really supports the people who needs the most from our community, and I would like to ask the Victory Program to increase their outreach to the neighbors to ensure that the elected officials who also attended this hearing today are part of those conversations, to know that there are avenues to share concerns or complaints or ideas. I do think that more outreach from the Victory Programs to residents will help insolve some of those issues or stress from the local residents. But I think this program provides very important services to residents in Boston, and with that, I make a motion of approval.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Stembridge.
First, I agree with everything Giovanni said. Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Wuwao.
Yes, I'd just like to expand upon that, just for transparency. I think the request for the conditional use meets the criteria set forth. I think it's consistent and compatible with the nearby uses, residential and healthcare. It's going to operate in an existing building with no significant changes in the exterior of the building. Due to the nature of the use, it's unlikely to generate a significant number of vehicular trips, and it's been operating since 2021, and based on the testimony today that we've heard, they have a procedure and protocol for responding to community concerns, and I'll just echo everything Mr. Valencia said, so yes.
Mr. Langham.
I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Aiken.
Yeah, in similar fashion to board member Wuwao, I mean, I think that the, everyone has laid out the items related to the several, you know, conditional use pieces here, and obviously, I think that the project meets many of them. I think that the challenges are around, you know, nuisances and adverse impacts. A little distraught to hear, you know, it took so long to get someone like Mr. Linsky on board. I've been a part of projects that have permanent supportive housing in the city that appear to have built up better community support along the way, but also, since this program opened, you know, we know that there's a lot of information around homelessness, opioid, and other, you know, housing stability problems in Boston, especially as housing has become more scarce and more expensive. So I think that the proponent, it sounds like there is a plan to continue to do work with the neighbors, engage the police, and so I think that, you know, they've helped satisfy the items needed for conditional use permits, so I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Ms. Panato.
Yes.
So I think the residents raised a lot of important concerns, and I hope that the applicant, moving forward, you know, will work more in partnership with them, and I hope that the residents will call 911 and 311 as they need to, so that there is the data that the applicants have talked about. Again, echoing what others have said, you know, meaning the conditional use, I will vote yes. With that, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, I did put my phone number in the chat, my cellphone, for anyone who wants to meet and reach out, and I can assist them in making sure we understand the problems.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Before we continue with the 9:30 hearings, since we passed the 11:00 a.m. hour, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11:00 a.m. timeframe. One, two hands up. Three hands, one second. Mr. Tim Burke.
Are there any other raised hands?
Mr. McCoy. Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, I'm here for One Waverly, for the cruise companies. We are requesting a defer.
How much time do you need?
Um, I don't know. Bear with me, please. So that would be for...
It's the last one of the...
Of course, thank you, Madam Chair. So that would be, this will be a request for case BOA 1698184 with the address of One Waverly Street. Would you go ahead and explain, Burke?
Yes, there was a bit of a snafu, and the incorrect plans were initially reviewed, but the correct plans have been reviewed.
Okay.
As of this date.
Thank you. Caroline, what we could do, is you in 24th?
Okay.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to June 24th.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Wuwao.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Mr. Burke, would you like to ask for a deferral?
I'm most certain of your procedure here. I heard you asked whether we wanted to defer. I am not the applicant I am opposing.
Okay, so then this is not the time. Okay, well, let's move forward.
So with that, so if there are no more requests, withdrawals, or deferrals, we'll return to the 9:30 hearings, specifically case BOA 17013.
to the nine thirty hearings, specifically case BOA one seven zero one three seven seven with the address of thirty fourth Whale Street. If the applicant, this is a mayor of housing project. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary Joseph Feaster. I always say I always love to follow Joe Handley in any proceeding. I'm here as the attorney for this applicant and as Mr. Stenbridge has mentioned, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is a Welcome Home Boston project. It is a project which is going to provide twelve homeownership residential units, six three-family and six, excuse me, six three-bedrooms and six two-bedroom units. I will have two individuals speak on this project. One is the pastor Willie Bodrick, who will speak to tell you about the project and his vision with regards to working with the city of Boston. And then the architect Killian Mokwetti from Social Impact Collective will walk you through the plans. So Reverend Bodrick.
Thank you, Attorney Feaster. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Reverend Willie Bodrick the second, and I am a principal and co-founder of Ambry Development Group together with my brother Winston Bodrick, who is also here on the line. We launched Ambry with a clear mission to build housing that creates opportunity, fosters equity, and helps families to build generational wealth, especially in communities that have often been left behind. As a pastor, as a husband, as a father, and as a resident of this neighborhood, I'm here today not only as a neighbor, but also as a developer, a builder with a deep commitment to this community. I live just a few blocks away from thirty fourth Whale Street, the site in which we are the tentative designated to develop this site, and I see firsthand the urgent need within our neighborhood for affordable home ownership opportunities in our community. The Welcome Home Boston Phase Two project will bring twelve homeownership units, as has been explained by Attorney Feaster. We have six reserved at eighty percent AMI with the other six reserved at a hundred percent AMI, and these units are a mix of two- and three-bedroom homes, which are designed for families who deserve an opportunity to stay and thrive here in our great city. We've designed the project with care and intention, and you'll hear more from Killian about this, both the undercroft parking, the preserve of trees and green space, and passive house. And this is really more about building homes for our community. It's about building a community that families can truly grow and feel proud of. As has been stated and understood by everyone who is here, we're in the middle of a housing crisis, and this project is a direct response to that. These are ownership opportunities for people who will make our city even greater and for the folks who make our city work, teachers and nurses, public servants and families who are trying to build a future right here in our community. And so we do ask for your support and approval of these variances that we will need to move forward this vision, and we thank you for your support and the opportunity to come here to create new pathways for affordable home ownership, community stability, and generational wealth in our community. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to hearing from each and every one of you and working with the community even further.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, members of the board, as you can see, that's the reason why I wanted the Reverend Bodrick to give the presentation at the outset. I am going to ask that the ambassador take us back to the beginning of the slides because the actual person who will walk the board on what the project is will be the architect. So if we can go back to the beginning of the slides, that would be great. And then if Killian, if you would take them through the slides, please.
And as you walk through them, can you please tell us what the violations are and how, you know, how is it differentiated from what's allowed? Thank you.
If you would like, would you like me to do that, Ms. Dog, or would you want the architect to walk?
You could do it as you proceed.
Okay.
It would just be helpful to hear that as you're talking, not just whatever.
All right, well, let me just state for the end of the outset what the violations are according to the notice. Article sixty, section thirty-two is horse feet parking and loading requirement. Article sixty, section three, multifamily use is forbidden. Article sixty, section sixty dash four, which is the regulation D, the additional lot area. Article sixty.
So, Mr. Feaster, I don't need you to reread what's there.
Oh, okay. You want to walk through how we're responding to it? All right.
Yes, so like, you have, you know, X feet away, and this beats a lot. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, fine. Why don't I let, then why don't I let Mr. Killian walk you through? I thought you wanted to have that since it wasn't?
No, we can read that. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Always want to satisfy the board. Mr. Killian.
Thank you. So I think I'm going to maybe start by just highlighting that the project was designed to kind of fit within the guideline of what the RFP for the MOH housing had stated regarding the building massing, which is we stayed within the kind of consistent heights of our neighboring buildings from across the street and next to us as well, so we're within three stories. However, because of the, you know, change in the grading, the height of the building is beyond thirty-five foot that we need to stay within. So we're thirty-eight foot, and therefore, that's one of the violations that we've got. One of the things that the design addresses as well that the community had raised in the RFP was to stay consistent with the neighborhood and materials. So as you can see, we kind of try to keep, to keep the material character of the neighborhood by using terracotta, which matches the majority of the buildings across from us as well. The other thing that I want to highlight is the entry into the plot as well as we located it where the recommendations were from the RFP, which is come off the street to the right of the lot, and also the fact that we need to provide some parking on the lot. So one of the challenges that we've got with the site because of a steep grade, digging the entire building of the basement would make the project, you know, unfeasible. So we've provided nine parking spaces, which are on a basement parking, which is again, is accessed by a stair directly from the parking into the buildings. If you can, I think one of the things that I highlight regarding the violations too is that we are violating the rear setback move from thirty that's required to sixteen that enables us to be able to actually get the twelve units that we are proposing today. And the FAR, because the lot, again, the lot is smaller than what is required, and by providing the twelve units, which we also recommended in the RFP, we, the FAR, we're violating that from zero point eight to one point five. I think if we can go to the, if you scroll down, I will let you know where to stop. Just keep scrolling to the actual plans. Just keep scrolling. So, yeah, here, so this is the basement parking that we're providing with the ADA. We have two ADA spaces right now. This is a little bit of an older plan, but in order of vice, we have two ADA spaces that we're providing. Can you go to the next space, next area? So the first ground floor, and I won't go through all the floor plans because they're typical after this one, but what we want to highlight is that the two units on the ground floor plan to the top, the unit one and unit four, those are proposed to be ADA accessible units, one of them being three-bed and the other one being two-bed. And then if we go to the next floor, which then shows that our three-bed units are two units in the front, the two-bed units are the ones in the back, and then after that, the next floor plate is the same as this one. And we are proposing to have all our services in the roof plan, and they're all going to be covered with a parapet so that we're not exposing those from the street. If you scroll to the elevations, and then I'll conclude my presentation. Elevation is next, after the sections there. So I think, as you can see, I mean, this is not color, but as you can see, the building height matches the ones across the street, which is thirty-one and thirty-five Whale Street, and also the one to our right, we are not far off in terms of height on that. But because we are on the elevated site, we therefore end up violating the thirty-five foot that is required for this area. I'll conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none? May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Conan Newton with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office, I could take the stance of support for this particular proposal. Some background information, the community process, it was an MOH community process that involved the applicant working directly with neighbors several times, March twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-five, April fourth of twenty twenty-five, and May fifth of twenty twenty-five. There's no active civic association in this area. That being said, the applicant did reach out to a couple of neighboring civics who were, did not weigh in on the project. The applicant secured a letter of support from State Rep. Russell Holmes. After that extensive feedback from residents, they continued to work with them just on various little concerns. With that, I'll refer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Go to Conan Harris.
Hello, hello, hello. I seen that, I'm just trying to get this camera down so you could see my face, but it's okay, I guess, if you can. My name is Conan Harris. I am in full support of this project. I arrived at this decision as former head of public safety and head of my brother's keeper for the Walsh administration. The number one reason why I'm in support of this program is the home ownership. Many times, it's a creation of opportunity to build wealth for families and residents in the city of Boston. It is super crucial and important. And I also love that the team is a majority MWBE, where it gives developers of color an opportunity to build capacity while helping to build out the beautification and the sustainability of a thriving neighborhood. Last but not least, which is most important in my book with unpredictable times that we find ourselves in as a nation, is the job creation, where developers' commitment to make sure that the workforce is a reflection of the neighborhood. Predictable work now for families are more now than ever. Of course, it will support the economy, but what I'm really looking for is the opportunity to help families, and with that predictable work, it feels crucial and important at these particular times. Thank you for having me at this time, for this opportunity.
Thank you. Councilor Orell.
Hi, thank you, Timothy Guimond here, representing Councilor Orell. Just wanted to quickly share our support for this project. I want to thank Conan for reiterating, particularly the home ownership aspect is something that the council is really, really happy to see. Also, that it's two-to-three-bedroom family style is also really important. So with that, as well as no, no lack of community engagement, there was multiple community engagement meetings. With that, we'd like to offer our full support. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Adam.
Hi, good morning. My name is Ashra Al Salam, Chair for Greater Manhattan Neighborhood Council. We are the civic that falls, that Whale Street, that the sadness falls in here. We were not contacted, but we do support this project as it is in congruence with our, the same statements that have been made by others. Thank you.
Steven Donovan.
Good morning. My name is Steven Donovan. I'm a Housing Development Officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. This project involves the disposition of city-owned land that's associated with Phase Two of the Welcome Home Boston program, which is an initiative to help low- and moderate-income Bostonians become homeowners. This project has the full support of the Mayor's Office of Housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, Jerome Frazier.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this project with the idea of residents and minorities participating. You know, that labor has been a very important part of the city, with one of five, allowing contractors and residents getting jobs, and it makes me excited to know that we're constantly, you know, focusing and driving home that labor is really a part of what drives this country and that has made this city where we are today with the programs that identify when, when our business, residents and females have jobs, and it makes me excited in that respect.
Thank you. Do you have other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
I just want to point out quickly, I just want, I don't know if the applicant's aware of, the Disabilities Commission had a couple of questions. I don't think we need to run through them, but those were submitted, so maybe they should just contact Sierra Tilden, because there were three items there about, you know, accessible routes, et cetera. And then also that Boston Transportation Department submitted a comment saying that the, you know, parking arrangement was okay, so just want to make sure everyone saw that.
Thank you.
With that, I'm also happy to make a motion.
Motion.
Third second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one six eight four four five three with the address of seventy-seven Bushnell Street. The applicant and/or their representative are present. Would they please explain to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair and the board. My name is Michelle Gordon. I live at seventy-seven Bushnell Street. I am looking for relief for rare, rare yard insufficient. I'm attempting to extend my home by addition to accommodate my mother and my aunt living with me. After the addition is added, as you can see in this image, there would be twenty-five feet to the property line. The addition is fifteen feet by twenty-seven feet, which is the exact width of the current structure. I don't know if the ambassador could stroll down if you also have the, yes, the image. So this is an image of the completed home. It would allow us to have a bathroom on the first floor as my aging mother and aunt are no longer able to go up the stairs. The first floor would have a mudroom because the plan is to convert the dining room into a bedroom. It would have a mudroom or just a little bit of extra space where we could eat, and there would be an additional bathroom and bedroom on the second floor. The current home only has a one-and-a-half bathroom, and the half bathroom is actually in a hallway. So that's the extent of it, is A-frame and ties into the structure of the existing home. And my other neighbors have also directly on both sides have extended their homes as well. My contractor is here, and we're open to any additional questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none? May I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Liba Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding seventy-seven Bushnell Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community this was conducting, including in a butters meeting held on Monday, March third, twenty twenty-five, which was attended by two constituents. The primary feedback from this meeting was resounding support from one of her neighbors. It was a very sweet show of neighborly support. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the Ashmont Adams Neighborhood Association, which convened in early March of this year and has also expressed support regarding the proposal. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Ramos from Council of Zerl's office, office of joint record and support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other testimonies.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Third second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, ma'am.
Madam Chair, as we pass the eleven-thirty timeframe, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the eleven-thirty hearing. or deferrals from the 11:30 hearing.
Was that a raised hand by Eric Owens?
No, sir, I'm ready to present our case.
Okay.
Then with that, we will return to the 9:30 case for case BOA 1679758 with the address of 76 Sanborn Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative or president, would they please reply?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eric Owens. I'm the homeowner at 76 Sanborn Avenue, and my wife Leslie is here with us. We're longtime homeowners on this, of this home, and we are here to get an exception for a side yard insufficient violation. We are seeking to build a small addition on the side of our house that will not get us any closer to the neighbors than our 120-year-old home already is. It simply goes up and back toward the rest of our yard. If you move to the, yeah, there's a picture of our home right there with a sunroom on the left. Our proposal will build upward, a floor above that and back to the back of our house. There are elevations on slide number five. And I just simply want to say that we have expressly written support from all of our buddy neighbors on all sides and no opposition at all in the two different meetings we've been at. This is, I think, hopefully relatively straightforward, and given the interest of time, I'm happy to defer to any questions that everybody has.
Thank you, sir. With that, any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the OMS community process. Our office hosted in a butters meeting on February 18th, at which no concerns were raised. The West Roxbury Neighborhood Council is in support of this application. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other testicles.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I'm just going to say, before Mr. Stembridge proceeds to our next case, we have three Article 80 cases ahead of us, so please be mindful of the time. Thank you. Mr. Stembridge.
Next, we have case BOA 1699534 with the address of 470 Western Avenue. As Madam Chair noted, this is an Article 80 case, so if the applicant and/or their representative would let us know about the case, and we'll go from there.
Yes. Good morning, Mr.
Briefly, Mr. Hanley.
Yes, ma'am, and I won't say it's a pleasure to follow Mr. Feaster. But for the record, again, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott Colty Miller, and Hanley, 28, State Street, Boston. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and the secretary. With me is Peter Zagory Anakis, who is the owner and proponent. I'm going to take you through the presentation very quickly and ask Peter to quickly show you how this all comes together in plan. So, next slide, please. So 470 Western Ave, as you'll see in the next slide, is in the city's newly adopted Whackerzy Study Area, which is known as the Western Avenue Corridor Study and Rezoning Initiative. We are an Article 80 proposal that was approved by the Board of, the Planning Board, and requires relief that is guided through Whackerzy for this residential housing development with affordable onsite IDP component. Next slide, please. So you'll see the site in the red hash. It is a little under 11,000 square feet of land. The majority of it is a surface asphalt unimproved parking lot with a two-family structure surrounded by as-built conditions at the lot line and a deficient public realm in this new study area. Next slides just show you quickly, and I won't go through all of this, what I had just mentioned, the as-built conditions, the impervious surfaces, the condition of the property and its views around the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Further views, we'll note that we're on the northern side of Western Ave, just down from the intersection of Leo Birmingham, across from the Health Center, and in an area that is seeing and experiencing future growth and development. Next slide, please. So just an overview of what you'll see here. What is being proposed is a six-story building of approximately a little under 35,000 gross square feet with an FAR of 3.24, and there are 39 residential units, which includes two studios, 13 one-bedrooms, 19 one-bedrooms, 13 two-bedrooms, and five three-bedrooms. Seven of these units are income, are set aside for onsite income-restricted housing, which is approximately 18% of the total units. We have 49 bike parking spaces and 14 vehicular parking spaces and a lot coverage of only about 60%. It is a six-story building with a building height of about 65 feet. Next slide shows you how this all comes together in zoning, Madam Chair. You'll see two indexes here. The first is the underlying zoning, which is Community Commercial One, and then the second is how we are guided by Whackerzy, which has been adopted. Again, this is an Article 80 project that was closely guided by Whackerzy through the BPDA process and also the Alston-Brighton Mobility Plan. Just basically three areas of relief. One is FAR. Again, we're approximately 3.24. Whackerzy guides to 3.5, so we're a little less than that, and underlying zoning is one. The next is the building height. Whackerzy suggests 65, which is what we're at, and the underlying zoning is 35. And the parking, Whackerzy and the BTD suggest a maximum of .5, which we're slightly under at .36, but we also have a full ED program and ample extra bike storage and the like, consistent with the Alston-Brighton Mobility Plan. One thing I'll leave you with on this, we're very proud that you'll see what we don't need relief for is the front yard setback, which is 10. We're in excess of what is required, and that is also driven by restoring and investing in the public realm for Whackerzy and an open space that's almost twice as much as what is required. So, next slide, I'm not going to go through all this, but just for your respective, requested findings, there are unique land conditions for this zoning relief, including its vast impervious unimproved surfaces of the parking lot, the as-built conditions, the lot lines which surround it, the excessive curb cut, deficient public realm, and inaccessible sidewalks with no street trees in this transformational location. We are curing these ills with a carefully designed development that supports Whackerzy and improves site and environmental conditions, better permeability, stormwater retention, and new street trees, and an upgraded public realm with vast accessible sidewalks and minimal lot coverage to contribute to the future of this location. You'll see this in the next slide, how it all comes together with the refusal letter, and I'll hand it off to Peter to take you very quickly through how this comes together in plan view. Peter?
Next slide, please. I am Peter Zagory Anakis. Thank you for hearing and appreciate everybody's time. So in this development, we've got a 60% lot coverage, lots of landscaped area, and we've also set the building mark back quite a few feet from the street line to make sure that we can meet the new requirements of Whackerzy so that the sidewalk and the new bike lane and the bus lane will be able to be built along Western Ave that's planned for the future. Next slide, please. This is a six-story building, masonry front with a standing seam mansard on the top of it to give it a kind of a transparent look to the sky. Next slide, please. This is a view looking down Western Ave east towards the building. As Joe mentioned, you've got many new projects on the street that are mostly of six-story origin up and down the street. I'm sure everybody's, most people are aware that Harvard is proposing a huge biotech mixed-use development about, you know, half a mile further down Western Ave on the east. Next slide, please. This is a street-on view of the project, again, six stories, masonry in the front, metal on the top to give it a transparent look. Next slide, please. This is our underground parking. We have a car elevator that accesses the garage, 14 parking spaces, 49 bike spaces, and all our utilities are in the garage area subsurface. Next slide, please. 49 bike room. Next slide, please. And then on the first floor, we have five units. We've got four two-bedrooms and one three-bedroom on the first floor. As Joe mentioned, of the 39 unit, 18% are affordable, and we've got a nice mix of affordables that are some twos, some ones, and I believe we even have a three-bedroom that's in the affordable mix. Next slide, please. On the, we have decks and balconies off the sides of the buildings, and we have one-twos and threes going up from the second, third, fourth, and fifth floor. Next slide, please. Next slide. And then on the roof, we have our HVAC systems and an array of solar panels to supply the common area electricity of the building. Thank you, everybody. Open it up for questions now.
Thank you.
As we do, Madam Chair.
Better. Always one for both. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Carl Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office will defer to the judgment of this board. This went through a constant planning-led community process involving a public meeting, small project review, approved by the board July 18th of 2024. They received support from the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. I know they had also engaged with the Alston Civic Association earlier in the process. I don't believe that civic group took a final vote. With that information, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support. This project is consistent with the Whackerzy zoning recommendations, and we think it's much-needed housing needed on Western Ave to offset all the biotech development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Zoe Shute. I'm a project assistant in the Development Review Division of the Planning Department, here to just express Planning Department's support of the project. It was brought to me through the April 18th, 2024. The SPRA was filed March 13th, and a Planning Department sponsored a public meeting on June 10th, and the project did additional independent community outreach as well. We're happy to see this project move forward and progress to the design review phase of Article 80, and we defer to this board for further action.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, with that, is there a motion? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very much, board. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the hearing scheduled for 11:00 AM. We have two companion cases to begin with, first being case BOA 1704651 with the address of 104 Percival Place. Along with that, we have case BOA 1704648 with the address of 108 to 110 Orleans Street. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Stembridge and Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll be very brief. Richard Linn's, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, as Mr. Stembridge said, this is, this involves a companion case for two properties located on Orleans Street, Personal Place, probably this spot right here. There is an existing, are two existing buildings on one lot, Madam Chair. This is a condition that's pretty common in the city. From a title standpoint, it does create some challenges, both from financibility and ownership. In this case, we are proposing to subdivide the property, not really changing anything with respect to the existing structures, and confirming occupancy of the rear building for six residential dwelling units. This is a condition that has existed on the site for a number of years, and we think it's important to ensure that the records are correct and that the division of the land is appropriate for the records of the registry of deeds. If we could scroll down to slide six, just to get the board a quick overview of the street view. So this is the building that's located in the front portion. This would be the 108, 110 Orleans Street. This is a three-unit building with the garage we see off to the right. Nothing is changing with respect to this building, no height, no modifications to the exterior. If we could scroll down to slide, I believe it's slide seven or eight, should have the, yeah, this is a good one to stop at as well. You can see the building in Percival, which is the rear. It's a yellow building off to the screen right, and that is the existing building. Once again, not changing anything with respect to the structure itself, not increasing the height of the footprint. All work will be interior for this building, which generally involves upgrade to life safety as well as modification of the egress to ensure compliance with the state building code. Next slide, please. Another view, and we can scroll to the next one. This is the existing building in Personal Place. We can see, if we zoom out a little bit just to see where the doors are, there are two separate engineways. But again, this is currently organized as six residential units, its kitchens, all facilities, heating system, et cetera, all in place. Again, a longstanding condition that is, needs to be confirmed within the records of ISD. I would point out, this is the EBR for a district. It's a new zoning district that will actually allow for multi-family use, so this is proposing a use that is consistent with current zoning. Next slide, please. Just a different view, next slide. And if we could have a slide 16, that's the subdivision plan, I'll talk briefly about the zoning relief that's been triggered. So as you can see, the existing structures for what we're proposing do not change from the condition that has existed. We do not increase any of the existing non-conformities that exist in the site. All of the violations that are cited, Madam Chair, members of the board, are due to the subdivision line being proposed, which certainly creates setback issues for both the rear and the side yard for the front building, as well as some lot coverage issues, which are new feature under-revented zoning for East Boston. Once again, these are all pre-existing conditions, and nothing is changing, other than the drawing of a lot line that separates these buildings into their own respective lots. If we can go to the next slide, please. One more slide further down. So you can see here, we do have the existing conditions of the building. As shown, we have the layouts starting from basement all the way up to the upper level. There's three levels of living. Each level has two units, sort of a mirror style. If we jump to the next slide. And this just shows the modifications that are being made. As I said, we are really just improving the egress in the building, adding in life safety, so this building will be brought up to the current requirements of the fire code, certainly something that would be a plus for the location of this building. Other than that, the relief that we are asking for with respect to the existing building, because the records contain no positive record of occupancy for six units, we do require variance in parking, because that is triggered based upon the proposed number of units in the building. But once again, this is a pre-existing condition, and nothing is changing with respect to the way these properties have been occupied historically. I'll pause there and answer any questions of the board.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Can you address whether there's any living area below the sea-level rise design elevation?
To the chair, great question. No, we are decided for flood zone, which means we do have to comply with any of the flood plain requirements for any of the utilities that we include, but we're not proposing any subterranean living space.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Attorney Linn, I'm pretty clear on the subdivision piece. I think I just am trying to understand a little bit more.
I think I just am trying to understand a little bit more about legalizing the six units and the historical use and how that reconciles with the layouts there. I mean, you've got some bedrooms that are, you know, less than seven feet by 14 feet. Just can you speak a little bit to that? You know, I guess you could stick as many units in a building and come back later and then say, well, it was a six-unit building, when it doesn't appear that, you know, many of those units have a whole lot of actual usable living space.
Right, great, great question, Mr. Aiken. I think the, so my client acquired the property relatively recently. During the acquisition, my understanding is the prior owner sought to confirm occupancy, as is the case in many situations in the city of Boston. There are records of no occupancy for a building, even though historically it may have been used as a certain number of units. So I believe the prior owner, and I wasn't involved at the time, sought to confirm occupancy. They did so not really understanding the process and simply took the default two-family, which is not correct. It's not correct for the layouts, it's certainly not correct for the number of tenants that were residing in the property. We certainly are not looking to take units offline. This is, as I said, has been a historic condition at the site. So in order to provide the correct occupancy, our office was retained, reviewed it, reviewed the existing plans, and have submitted this for the correct occupancy in six units. I do understand that the sizes of the units probably aren't the most optimal. If this were new construction, we certainly wouldn't be proposing units of that size. We're just reflecting what the historic use of the site has been. I believe the assessor's records actually would confirm that as well, Mr. Aiken, that this has been used as a multifamily use for many, many years.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 1 to 4 Percival Place, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including a butters meeting on both 123 and 31325, which was attended by about four constituents each. In the first meeting, there were some concerns about a butter notification and resident displacement that were no longer expressed in the second meeting. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the Go Street Neighborhood Association, which convened on 22425. The association expressed support regarding the proposal, and the support stems from the conditions that were agreed to in the meeting, that 108 Orleans Building remains unchanged, and because fire and safety systems are being upgraded. The individual that was in opposition to the proposal stated that there was a lack of parking. Ultimately, the association has supported the proposal and also provided a letter of support to the board. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Power from Councilor Colas Zapata's office. At this time, the council would like to go and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Would that may have, I'm sorry?
No, no raise, no raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Would that may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with design review from the planning department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Chair, just, I don't want to speak for Jeff Hampton. We're not proposing any exterior modifications to the building. So I'm just wondering if design review is absolutely necessary. I apologize for interrupting the motion.
That's okay, Mr. Hampton.
No, we don't have to do a design review on this one.
Okay, I'll make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Oh, sorry, yes, I thought I was unused.
No worries. Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
Next, we have case BOA 1706457, with the address of 77 to 81 Terrace Street. This is also an Article 80 MOH case. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Plugini here on behalf of ODJ Development in partnership with the Mayor's Office of Housing. With me this morning is Sam Randell, the project manager, and Jonathan Garland, who will present the architectural drawings. 77 Terrace Street at Mission Hill is zoning in both local industrial and 3F3000. The building parcel upon which this is built is approximately 29,132 square feet. This proposal is a result of an RFP from the Mayor's Office of Housing. The subject property is currently made up of 11 separate parcels that are being combined and subdivided into six parcels that will be led in A through F. The application is to construct a new five-story building on parcel A, which is approximately 29,132 square feet. The building will provide 48 100% affordable homeownership condominiums with approximately 2,000 square feet of ground-floor retail and 13 off-street parking spaces. The program will be 12 studios, 17 one-beds, 16 two-beds, and 3 three-beds. On parcel B, the developer will construct a 15,840-square-foot public park. This park will be designed in conjunction with the Boston Parks Department and will be turned over to the Parks Department after the developer completes the construction. On parcel C, which is approximately 12,000 square feet, the developer will construct a community garden for the public's use. This will be constructed in conjunction with the trustees of the reservation and will be turned over to the trustees upon its completion. Parcels D and F are small parcels that will be conveyed to the abutting property owners to rectify some existing encroachments in use. So we're looking at a proposal which will transform a once-contaminated site into a 48-unit affordable homeownership, a new park, and a community garden to be used by the public. At this time, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I'll turn it over to Jonathan Garland to walk you through the architectural drawings. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Okay, briefly?
Okay, thanks, Chairman. Chairwoman, if I can just start at the beginning there. So this is the existing plot of land. You can see on that, on that plan there, it's got the grading shown, and then the existing lots up on the north end of the site or the Parker Street side. Then we also have the terrace side, and as John mentioned, we're subdividing the entire property into open space parks as well as residential building space. If you go to the next slide.
Madam Chair, can Jonathan, can you speak a little bit more into the microphone? It's kind of hard here.
That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Can you hear me better?
Not so much, just raised it up a bit.
Seems like it's all the way up as far as I can go.
Okay, I may just need you to speak louder then, because I think we have it on like 50 or 60, so everybody else sounds like they're shouting.
Okay, all right. Hopefully you can hear me.
There you go, perfect.
Hopefully you can hear me any better, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Let's go to the next slide then. I'll just hold this here. Can you, can you scroll down? Okay, keep scrolling past the site plans. Okay, thanks. So these images, the top-left image is showing the building within the context of Terrace Street. There is a bit of an entry forecourt. You can see in the green, to the left is the existing Mississippi's building, and that sort of comprises the top two images. To the far right of the ground floor is commercial retail at the base of the building. And then we have the four stories above that of residential units. The lower-left image is showing the shot from the community garden, looking back at the building. At this vantage point, the grade has gone up the street. So this is where you'll see a three-story building facade on this side of the building, from the Parker Street. Next slide. A series of floor plans here. The colors are, the yellow is studio apartments or studio units. The one-beds are in the green, the two-beds are in the blue, and the three-beds are in the purple. And John had already given the different mix of the unit types. We can go back to that if there are any questions. And then also, I'd like to point out on the lower-right-hand plan that there are 13 parking spaces that are structured within the building, as you can see there on the plan. Next slide. A series of floor plans. I won't walk through all the details, but this is, because the site is navigating a 30-foot grade change from Terrace Street up to Parker, you'll see a good amount of this area at grade being part of the undisturbed earth. But the part that's shaded in the white, you have the bike storage, which complies with City of Boston bike guidelines. We have residential entry lobby space. And then again, to the south of this plan, we're showing the vehicular garage ramp and about 2,000 square feet of commercial retail space. Next slide. Again, the parking is up on this floor, the 13 spaces, and then we're showing a series of residential units that look out across Terrace Street from here. Next slide. Typical floor plan, second-floor plan, which shows the balance of the units as you're going up the building. Next slide. I believe the third floor is very similar. If you skip past that, and the fourth floor is also very similar. Next slide, this is the roof plan. Next slide. Elevations, you could probably see it better in the illustrative renderings, but we are showing sort of like a simple paneling system and making sure that windows and the overall scale and the massing of the building work within the context of the neighborhood. Next slide. And then finally is the elevation at the bottom here, showing the three-story look from the higher end of the site, from the Parker Street side of the site. Next slide. And a series of building sections. I believe that concludes our design presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Quick question. You are, go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, you are not, since this is an affordable housing project, you have no requirement to provide parking. So that is good, but anyway, you are providing 13 parking spaces for 48 units. How are you going to allocate those spaces to the units?
It hasn't totally been sorted out, but some of the precedent models that we might follow is on a lottery system, which may happen on an annual basis. We have seen some success with that on another project we're working on in the Jamaica Plain neighborhood area, which is 45 units of affordable homeownership. And we also see the importance of some parking, because these are homeownership units. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process, this went through a Boston planning, excuse me, a Boston planning and MOH-led community process. It was very well-received by the community from our understands. Members of the public were pleased that there would be affordable homeownership, allowing new families to move into the neighborhood, as well as the commitment to keeping the open space accessible to all and really beautifying this part of Mission Hill. We've received three letters in support from residents just recently. Run away of any concerns, so with that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Camille Platt.
Hi, my name's Camille Platt DeCosta. I am the Boston Planning Department Project Manager for the project at 77 Terrace Street. So the project was approved by our board on March 13th of this year. The public meeting that we hosted as part of the Article 80E Small Project Review was very well-attended and garnered positive feedback from the community. So at this time, we defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record when you testify. We'll go to John in Fancy.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chairman, members of board. We're Mission Hill residents since 1985, and we have been watching this project progress through various developers. We'd like to support this particular project because it is working for providing both community gardening space and affordable housing. We'd like the board to issue as much support as I can, and allow this appeal to go necessary, go forward to allow this project to complete. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Please state your name and address. That will go to Christopher Rooney.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Christopher Rooney, Senior Development Officer from the Mayor's Office of Housing. This project will provide much-needed affordable homeownership opportunities as well as public open space in the Mission Hill neighborhood. The ownership units will be sold to eligible households earning up to 80% and at 100% of the area meeting income. And MOH is in full support of the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the testimony.
That, may I have a motion? I'm sorry, is that Ms. Courage?
I'm Mr. Courage.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Sorry for the delay with raising my hand. The Councilor Durkin for District 8 is in strong support of this project. She's been following this project every step of the way and has sent numerous letters, really pleased with the affordability of housing components, and just really wants to make sure that her support is noted. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Most of you approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes, great project, and I appreciate having 48 affordable homeownership opportunities for Boston. I think that is great news.
Thank you. Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1698825, with the address of 496 to 500 Talbot Avenue. Do believe this is also an Article 80 case.
Indeed.
If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Justin Branch from Plugini in Norton, business address 10 Forbes Road, Braintree, Mass. I am here on behalf of the project proponent for 500 Talbot Ave, JMB Property Development. Also with me today is project manager, Ashlyn Kerr. Proposal before you today is to complete the fit-out and confirm the occupancy of the two ground-floor commercial spaces of a five-story mixed-use building. Finding a quick history, as you all seem to be aware, this is an Article 80 project that was originally approved by the planning department back in 2018 as a mixed-use development ground-floor retail and 40 residential units from floors 1 through 5. It was subsequently approved by ZVA in 2019. The project then completed the process for a notice of project change, which increased the amount of income-restricted units from 5 to 17, and increased the number of overall units to 42, making it a 40% affordable project. These changes were approved by both planning and ZVA in 2022 and 2023 respectively. Construction began on the project in September of 2023. This brings us to the current date, where we are before you to confirm the occupancy of the two commercial retail spaces. One will be a grocery store reuse becoming the daily market. The proponent launched their first daily market in Savin Hill to great success, centering on the concept of a small local grocer where neighborhood residents could pop in to purchase produce, baking supplies, cremated meals, and the like. They found there is an appetite for more such stores, and this location provides the perfect setting for their second iteration. The space will be approximately 3,000 square feet. The other commercial space will be a fitness use in the form of B-Tone Fitness. B-Tone Fitness is a boutique fitness studio focused on Pilates-based exercise classes. They have a number of franchise locations in Boston and the Crossman as a choosance. This space would allow for a new opportunity for B-Tone to provide small, accessible fitness opportunities for the Dorchester community. This space will be approximately 1,815 square feet. It is worth noting that this proposal involves no external work and renovations other than the creation of signage. Although what will be required is the completed fit-out of the interior spaces. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process. So prior, this had been a PDA-led project. We have a butters meeting on April 1st specifically for the ground-use elements. The meeting was well-attended. There are residents there who spoke in support of the proposal, citing, you know, pleasant experiences with the other market that's located in Savin Hill. I'm pleased that this brand was going to be in this part of Dorchester, as well as those who are looking forward to using the gym use as well. There were some concerns expressed about parking, which the applicant was in. which the applicant was able to address and just kind of explain their business model. They were engaging with the St. Mark's Civic Association, which I understand was pleased with the proposal. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor. Ms. Gerald's office?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Laming this from Counselor Fitzgerald's office. I would like to go and record and support this proposal. Thank you.
Any other raised hands?
All right, that's it. One more. Brian Worrall's office.
Hi, thank you. Just wanted to express our support for this project. We also attended the St. Mark's Association meeting, where there was near-unanimous support for both of these businesses. We also want to thank James Baker in Victoria for the excellent presentation at that meeting, and we appreciate the community engagement. And with that, we are in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Fine. Yes.
Oh, long day already, Ms. Panato.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one six seven zero three nine nine with the address of forty-four R Bradley Street.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher of six eight six, our tax and business address of Ten Forbes Road in Braintree. The project before you today is forty-four R Bradley Street. It's a rear garage. Currently, there is an existing single-story garage there. The application before you is to raise that garage and construct a new two-story garage. With that, we need some zoning relief, which includes the use itself because we are proposing to have a home office on the second floor of that garage for the homeowner to, not a professional office, but just to be used as additional workspace. Lot width is insufficient. The FAR, because we added about seven hundred square feet of living space, increases the building height because it's an auxiliary building with two stories. The side yard and the rear yard are insufficient. As we look at the proposed plans, this is the existing garage here. There is currently a two-foot easement to the left side of the garage when you face it, to the left side of the driveway, which you can see indicated by that hash line on this site plan. And that's the existing garage there. Next slide. Keep going. Perfect. And then this illustrates our proposed new paved area in front of the garage and then the new footprint of the garage, which essentially is on the same footprint on the left end and the rear. It extends over to the right a little bit further to create a three-car garage with the living space above. Next slide, please. So this is the proposed layout of the first-floor garage, first floor and second floor of the garage. First floor would have three garage doors for three vehicles. The client owner, Mr. Re, the project owner, Mr. Reorden, is a City of Boston Explosive Ordinance Officer for Boston PD EOD. And his EOD truck, his bomb truck, is often brought home with him. That was one of the precipices for this garage, was so that we had a garage that was large enough for him to park the truck in the garage and then for his personal vehicles as well. We are proposing a bathroom on the first floor and then no bathroom or any additional living features up above. And then we have a small balcony to create a little outdoor space, about three hundred and thirty-three square feet off of the second floor of the garage. Next slide, please. This is the building in plan. As we can see, we have three garage doors in the main body of the garage. We have a second-story addition where the office on the second floor takes place. And then to the right, we have the main doors with the balcony above. Elevation two just shows us a side door entrance into the garage. And then elevation three is the rear and elevation four being the left side when facing. Next slide. Those are the existing elevations, so we can see the framework and the height there. It's only about eight feet, not tall enough to park a truck and certainly not tall enough for the EOD truck. Next slide. Is that, that's it. So with that, I'll happily turn over any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, if you're on, can you share your recommendation and why?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, planning, City of Boston Planning Department. We recommend a denial without prejudice on this particular one because the amassing of an accessory garage is just, you know, out of character for what we would normally like to see for such a use. We understand the owner of the property and the business that he is in. However, it's just that this garage is just being the size that it is. We'd like to see it reduced, that's all.
Questions from the board?
I have a question for the applicant. So I'm looking at the proposed site plan. Does the garage encroach on the abutting property? It looks like, um...
There's an existing easement there. It's about two feet. So it'd be on that easement. It's where the existing end wall of the garage is today.
Okay, and do you have the dimensions of the truck you're talking about? Like length and...
The owner is on, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, I kind of agree with the Planning Department in this case, just to kind of put that out there. So any more information you can provide, maybe on the size of the truck, maybe would be helpful.
Thank you. So hopefully you can look for that as we continue with questions. Any other questions?
Hold on one second, Madam, excuse me, Madam Chair. The owner, Rafael Reorden, is on. Raf, do you happen to know the dimensions of your truck? And in light of the size, we're happy to work with the BPD. Should the project be amenable on the, on the dimensions of the garage? You know, should it be reduced or if the second floor need to be cut back? I know that we had a strong community process. It was fairly well-received by the Hyde Park Neighborhood Civic Association as well as receiving support from the abutters. Raf's a lifelong resident of this street. The neighbors know him very well, and the project was well-received.
Other questions from the board?
Did you mention a deck off of the garage? And what's the need for a deck off of a garage?
If you can go down to the plans, I can illustrate why we did that. Right there. So if you look, the, on the first floor, we created the bathroom and some additional workspace to the right of the parking area. And we just had that open space up above. And since we were creating the space of the office, we thought it was a viable space to use.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll take public testimony.
Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Hyde Park Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consists of an abutters meeting, very lightly attended and facilitated on January seventh, where abutters were only voiced support for the proposal. Our next proposal was presented to the East Ripper Neighborhood Association, where they received a vote of neutrality. They voted neutral. To date, our office has received one letter of support from the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association as well. Thank you for your time. And the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one raised hand. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Patricia Redden. I'm a lifelong resident of forty-one Bradley Street, which is across the street from forty-four Bradley Street. I'm also the mother, obviously, of Rafael. I would just like to say that we are both lifelong residents. We get along with everybody in the neighborhood. There is not a single person in the neighborhood that opposes this. And when you ask about the size of the truck, it's like an F-350. It's not like a humongous dump truck or anything crazy. It's just that he wants to have, be able to have that in a space when he brings it home because right now it's kind of congebled in his driveway. Also, I would just like to make you aware, I mean, he's trying to grow his family and he just needs additional space. And when it comes to the, the, I'm going to say patio, the deck on the top, he right now does not have any deck on his porch, on a porch coming off of his house. So something like that is something that he would like to have as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion? I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I will put forward a motion of approval with proviso for BPDA designer view to pay particular attention to improving the setbacks of this accessory building, amassing as well as the amount of paving and, you know, no additional paving beyond what's necessary to access the driveway.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. With that, let's take a fifteen-minute break.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
President, Madam Chair.
Mr. Valencia?
Present.
Ms. Weewell?
Present.
Mr. Langham?
Present.
Mr. Aiken?
Present.
Ms. Panado?
Present.
Okay, closure is Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start off with case, the case BOA 1696783. Ah, it's, it's an Article 80 case. I believe we will hear from Attorney Maranty on this one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair members. My name is George Maranty. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Monarch Development and its principal, Joey Akari. Architectural services are being provided by Sousa Design Architects, and Dennis Greenwood from Sousa is also here today. As Mr. Stenbridge noted, this is an Article 80 small project approved by the BPDA Board last December. Madam Chair, I will not activate my camera in light of the difficulties that we had last week. So the proposed project consists of a new four-story mixed-use building containing 12 new one-bedroom residential apartment units, primarily market rate with two affordable one-bedroom units at 70% AMI, provided in accordance with the City of Boston's inclusionary development policy, as well as approximately 3,080 square feet of ground floor commercial space planned to consist of a new restaurant. The building will be served by an at-grade parking area in the rear, which will accommodate six motor vehicles accessed via New Hill Place, which is a public way running into the site from West, East Barrett Street, with onsite secure storage in the building and 12 bicycles. Project site consists of two parcels of land totaling approximately 5,600 square feet. The site is zoned MFRLS, multi-family residential local service, where the proposed multi-family residential use is allowed and the proposed restaurant use is conditional. In a moment, Dennis Greenwood will briefly walk the board through the architectural drawings. I'll first speak to the zoning relief being requested. The proposed building, first of all, has a footprint only modestly larger than the existing building, with basement storage for that restaurant use and for the building generally. The relief is being sought here for building height in the relevant MFRLS zoning sub-district. Maximum zoning height is 35 feet, which is somewhat curious with respect to East and West Broadway, which are South Boston's main retail and mixed-use corridors, since the rest of residential South Boston allows 40 feet. Be that as it may, this building proposed at 44 and a half feet is in fact consistent with height, as-built height in the surrounding area, both existing building stock as well as other new buildings recently approved by the board. Much like building height, the maximum FAR is also somewhat curiously lower under MFRLS zoning than under MFR zoning, and it's set at 1.5. The proposed FAR here is 3.58, which is also, and as Planning Board's Article 80 memo points out, consistent with established dimensional context in the area. This consistency with surrounding context is also applicable to the building's side setback distances, with the right side being conforming and the left side connected to the building on its left, rather than having the required three-foot side yard setback. This owes to providing street wall continuity in what is essentially a mixed-use or commercial area of East Broadway, and the building on the left is also owned by my client. Another somewhat curious feature of MFRLS zoning is that it requires an extraordinary large minimum of 5,000 square feet for a single dwelling unit. As I mentioned, the total size of this lot is 5,600 square feet. The zoning refusal letter cites a rear yard insufficiency violation. The required rear setback is 20. And this building substantially meets that 20-foot setback requirement at the ground level. There are rear bays projecting into the setback area at the second story living room and above. These are allowed as, as projections into a required rear yard, but they do have, there are two small posts that are supporting these bays, and they also come to ground in the required setback area, which is the reason for that citation. But as I said, the face of the building wall, the second story and above, meets the setback but for the, but for the projecting bays. There's a violation for insufficient off-street parking, of course, and for off-street parking design with respect to design and maneuverability. The number of required parking spaces for the residential use is 11, one for each market rate unit and 1.4 for the two IDP units, and the number of parking spaces provided is, as has been indicated, six. As for the maneuverability, there's a virtually clear 20-foot drive and turning lane to the rear of the parking spaces, five of which are full-sized, with one being a compact space measuring seven and a half by 20 feet. There's also a usable open space violation. The six rear units, each has a balcony of either 90 or 95 square feet. It was deemed undesirable by the community during community process for the building to have either front-facing balconies or a roof deck. The proposed restaurant use is conditional. My client, Mr. Akari, is an experienced restaurant owner-operator who formerly operated numerous restaurants in the city, generally in South Boston in particular. This is an appropriate location for a restaurant, as it is the main retail corridor in South Boston along with West Broadway, with numerous examples of other restaurants operating successfully in the immediate area. We are aware that there are concerns about the details of the proposed restaurant, its operating hours and capacity, for example. As Mr. Akari explained during community process, he recently stepped back from restaurant operations and will not be managing this proposed restaurant, although he will continue to own the real estate. His goal is for this space to be a chef-driven restaurant, offering something above pub fare, and he's been speaking with numerous potential operators. As the board knows, there's a separate licensing board process, which will address all outstanding issues of operational concern expressed during community process. But independent of that, my client has promised that he intends this to be a high-quality sit-down restaurant with notable cuisine, which will be professionally and responsibly managed. With that, Madam Chair, just very, very briefly, Dennis Greenwood will go through the plan so that the board can get a better idea of the building. Dennis?
Thank you, George. Dennis Greenwood with Sousa Design Architects located at 81 Boylston Street in Brookline. So the slide that we have up now is an exterior rendering along East Broadway. You can see we looked at the context, looked to tie the building into the context along East Broadway in terms of following the zero setback along East Broadway to make sure there's that continuous model, or following the model setback along East Broadway, as well as the general vernacular. We're using the red brick for that kind of masonry feel. We're looking at pilasters that come down. We have black brick along the first floor. We have a small sign band that projects out 30 inches over the sidewalk, just to give a little area for signage. We're looking at recessed panels and kind of factory-style looking windows, double hung. Again, we're at 44 feet 6 inches, which was consistent with the elevation of the newer buildings along East Broadway, including the one that you kind of see in the background there, at the corner of L and East Broadway. So as an infill building, we're looking at, kind of tying into the context of the neighborhood in terms of scale, mixed-use development, and materiality. There are a total of 12 units in the buildings, so the second, third, and fourth floor each have four residential dwellings at one-bedroom piece, one bedroom, one bath. And then again, on that first floor, which you see there's a large amount of transparency and glazing there, that's the proposed restaurant use, that conditional use, that's just under 3,100 square feet on that first floor. You know, I think George ran through a lot of the zoning pieces already. I'm happy to answer any plan-specific questions there may be, since it looks like we're already kind of at the end of the slideshow here.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judge from this board some background information in the community process. So this went through a Boston-planning-led community process involving a public meeting in October of 2024. Eventually, it was approved by the BPDA Board on December 12 of 2024. We understand that they met with the City Point Neighborhood Association, which after a discussion came out in opposition of the proposal. They expressed concerns regarding the height in relation to a corner lot on that street, as well as concerns regarding the parking ratio and the potential capacity of the bar. They felt that with the bar being located next to another bar with a large capacity, this would lead to the sidewalk being taken over and being very challenging for disabled residents, families with strollers, et cetera, to navigate and be able to access that MBTA bus stop there. With those concerns, I will defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Vanessa Wu from Councilor Flynn's office. Councilor Flynn would like to go on record in support due to a good community process that look to address neighborhood quality of life concerns, including the absence of the roof deck and adding six parking spaces. At the same time, Councilor Flynn would like to see additional work by the development team with the community in the licensing board process as it relates to neighbors' concerns on the nature of the restaurant itself, the capacity, the hours of operation, and issues of accessibility and potential
May I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Mr. Lyman?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have two competing cases, the first being case BOA one-seven-zero-three-eight-eight-five with the address of two-twenty-two Saint Teresa Avenue. Along with that, we have case BOA one-seven-zero-three-eight-eight-eight with the address of two-twenty-four Saint Teresa Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Stephen Daddario. I'll be representing the applicant. I do have Sarah Valardi, who will be the contractor, and Eric Zacherson, who is the architect for this project. For, the project goal is to subdivide a thirteen-thousand-seven-hundred-square-foot lot and erect two new single families. For two-two-two Saint Teresa, the variance we are seeking is lot width. If we scroll to the next page, as you can see, it's a geometrical-challenging lot. We do have the frontage and the width in the middle and the back of the lot, or the back of the building, but not in the rear of the lot. That's the only variance we're seeking for two-two-two Saint Teresa. I'm happy to walk through the plans, or we can jump over to two-two-four Saint Teresa.
I'm fine with you jumping to two-two-four.
Okay. Two-two-four, same thing with the lot width. We do have the frontage and the width in the middle and rear of the building, but the lot tapers in, so it triggers the lot width. In the frontage, we're seeking relief. We are proposing seventeen versus the twenty feet required. The house was originally moved up. We spoke with the neighbor across the street, and, you know, we settled on seventeen feet. In terms of the side setback, we do, we are conforming on the right side. That was one of the requests that the neighbor next door had, was to be a minimum ten feet, as we are, and we're seeking relief on the left side. But the building for two-two-two was moved over more to the left, so we do have significant space between the two buildings. And then there's the far, this one does have a finished basement, making it a little bit larger in square footage, but other than that, those are the only variances on this, on this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and board members, C. Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process, our office hosted in a butters meeting on January twenty-seventh, at which there were a number of concerns raised from abutters about setbacks, the possibility that blasting would be necessary in the construction process, and the loss of a mature tree. Proponent presented to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which requested a number of changes to the setbacks, and proponents made those changes. They re-presented to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which prompted that group to support the revised proposal. To our knowledge, there is still a direct abutter opposed to the revised proposal. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
We have one raised hand. Please state your name and rec, uh, name and address for the record. Tom?
My name is Jim Burke. I live at two-sixteenth Saint Teresa Avenue, which abuts the single lot that is next door. At the outset, missed the statement from the city's representative, maybe missed a few facts, that the entire neighborhood is opposed to this property. It was quite obvious in the first meeting. In the second meeting, all the director butters want nothing to do with it, and there's a number of reasons. Details, some of them undertake hopefully very few minutes in opposing this project. The first and foremost, this is the second attempt by this landlord to try to put two houses on this lot. This was brought up five years ago, and I've sent the board a letter on the merger doctrine with neighborhood opposition, which is exactly the same as it was last time, but much stronger this time. And with the issues with the merger doctrine, which you all far greater than I do, I don't do merger, I don't do zoning work, I do tax work. With the requirements of the merger doctrine here, this property, the whole idea of developing this property fell apart. I don't know if anybody knows why it fell apart, but it never went forward. So all the information you can get today is virtually the same information you had five years ago, and I do not believe I was never notified at this point, or heard this issue before. So what we have here is a single lot. The lot is totally merged for zoning purposes. It has been quite some time. I provided the board with details, exacting details as to why it's a single lot, it's not two lots, as is reflected in the filings with the board, it is a single lot. And what we have here is someone, for the second time, trying to put too much house on too little of property. That is the objection. Nobody, I've never heard in any of these meetings, anybody in the neighborhood being encouraged to improve the neighborhood. Matter of fact, I put it on Mr. Daddario directly at one of the meetings. Just give us basically a panorama, I can't, again, I'm not a developer, I don't, I don't know the language, but just show how it affects everybody else's house.
Thank you.
To this day, that has never happened. So I've spent, yeah, since ten-thirty, trying not to miss this meeting. I occurred, some of the people talk about community involvement, well, there really hasn't been any here. It's been hostile to this development. And what I'm, what I'm requesting is that simply, the law of the law, it's supposed, everybody's supposed to be treated fairly. We have zoning laws to be applied. He hasn't made one argument as to why the merger doctrine should be applied here. He hasn't made any arguments as to why he should selectively be granted authority to build houses when, there's not even an argument, never mind meeting as Burke approved, he hasn't even made an argument. He's just trying to slide this by the board because, quote-unquote, there's a slide, there's a housing shortage.
Mr. Stembridge? Thank you.
Respectfully questioned, you guys denied the zoning request, and if you have any questions, though, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Any other raised hands?
We have one more, Steve Daddario.
Well, he's the proponent. Are there any other?
No, yes.
Okay, so please respond to those concerns.
Yeah, in terms of the size, I mean, if we can go back to two-two-two Saint Teresa, we shrank that house and we actually moved it over to twelve feet of a setback versus ten. I mean, we're within the zoning, the zoning laws for everything but the lot width, so we're not going for far. We meet the side, front, all the setbacks in terms of the house, so being too much house, I'm really just following the zoning guidelines. And then, in terms of this merger doctrine, you know, it's my understanding that ISD requires a subdivision plan, we filed the all, but once we get approvals, we'll actually go and file the subdivision. You know, I kind of proposed at this time, if there's a, you know, the board kind of moved based on the merits of this proposal, and if there's a bigger legal decision, you know, that board approval wouldn't trump that, that decision. But I mean, in terms of this house, it's a twelve-foot setback, I kicked it over twelve feet, just to give it more space. That was the original issue in the neighborhood meeting, and, you know, the merger doctrine I'm just hearing for the first time today.
Is there parking for this? I see a driveway adjacent. I don't know if that's.
Yes, yep, there's parking for both, two garage lots.
Okay, thank you. Any other question from the board?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Hearing none, is there a motion?
Am I on the motion, if I could?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Mr. Lyman?
No.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Hearing none, we'll move on to case BOA one-six-nine-one-two-three-four with the address of nine Oak Square. I thought we just, this case is represented by Jerry Morancey?
That is correct, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Morancey. I'm an attorney with the business address of three-fifty West Broadway in South Boston. I represent Peter Ben Simon, who, along with his family, has owned nine Oak Square Avenue for the past twenty-five years. My client is proposing to completely renovate the building, erect a rear addition, and change the legal occupancy from a four-family dwelling to a six-family dwelling. The site is very large and very irregularly shaped. The lot size is thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-eleven square feet, and the zoning district is three-F five thousand. This means that solely in terms of lot size, the site is large enough for two, three-family dwellings. But rather than seeking to erect a second building, my client is rather seeking to modestly expand the existing building and add two units. There are two violations related to the proposed six-family use. A multi-family use in three-F zoning, of course, requires a variance, with the second violation being the extension of that non-conforming use, the present four-unit building, by more than twenty-five percent in area or volume. So the multi-family use in the three-F and the extension of the non-conforming use. There are two-dimensional violations, insufficient front yard setback and insufficient side yard setback, and these are the only two-dimensional violations. With respect to the front yard setback, there is virtually no difference between the existing and proposed front yard setbacks. The reconstruction of the front porch and stairs here simply shift the position of the, of the two stairs leading up to the porch, and those stairs are within the area of the required front yard setback. Frankly, I believe there are actually allowed projections into a front yard and therefore code-compliant, but they have in fact been cited by ISD as requiring relief. With respect to the side yard setback violation, the rear addition, which is modest in size and which is zoning compliant, will actually cause an existing right-side non-conformity to be eliminated, so it's actually reducing the right-side non-conformity that presently exists, because it's reducing a small jut out on that side of the building, or eliminating that jut out. Likewise, a small portion of the existing building extending into the left side setback is also being eliminated. So both side setbacks are going to be conforming with respect to distance from the lot lines, but the code here also requires an aggregate distance from buildings abutting on each side of the lot, and that aggregate number is fifteen feet, five feet from the lot line plus ten feet additional from the abutting building's side walls. The existing aggregate right now is thirteen-point-seven feet, which is not going to be reduced at all. The rear addition itself complies with the side setback requirements, meaning that the site violations owe to the existing setback conditions that are merely being extended horizontally backwards, and where they're being extended backwards, there are no, there are no building walls of the abutting buildings. They don't go back that deep. This is an exceptionally deep lot. I need to point out that the original zoning refusal letter cited a violation for a forbidden basement unit. This was an erroneous citation, as the unit in question, which is unit two, is actually a bi-level unit. The plans examiner correctly removed that violation from the updated zoning refusal letter issued yesterday, and no relief is being sought for basement unit, because there is no basement unit. And this relates to why this matter was deferred. As a reminder to the board, we originally deferred this at my client's request to allow for the removal of one parking space, consisting with the planning recommendation, which, while supportive of the change of use in the rear addition, argued that the parking ratio should be no more than one-to-one. As seven parking spaces were originally proposed for the six units, we addressed the planning recommendations concerns by removing one parking space, which is reflected in the updated plans approved by ISD. In addition, the planning recommendation had also incorrectly identified unit two as being a basement unit, I think just taking that from the zoning refusal letter, and the recommendation suggested the introduction of light wells. Again, the unit in question is a bi-level unit, and rather than light wells, there are actually five windows on three sides of the unit, as well as a sliding glass door opening to the rear yard, so plenty of light and air for the portion of the unit that's at the basement level, which again is substantially, or at least partially, at grade in the rear of the building. There is no unit living space in the front of the basement, that's all mechanical storage area. With that, Madam Chair, I'll pause and take any questions that any members may have.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Not question, well, question for Mr. Hampton, if he's still with us.
Yes, Mr. Stembridge?
Could you explain the planning department's response?
Well, if there was only a new zoning violation letter written yesterday, there's no way we would have seen it, as you guys had received these recommendations last week, and I know that there was communication about whether or not ISD had indeed reviewed this, because this date was coming. So we had no new zoning letter, nor new plan showing this. So, you know, we stand by our recommendation, and I understand changes may have been made, it may have been approved by ISD yesterday, but we would never have known that. So, you know, ours is based on what we had in front of us at the time, and not what was recently approved by ISD.
Understood, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
So just for clarification, can you go over the elevations that show that basement unit and explain the ceiling heights and how that unit functions?
Yes, Ms. Panado, I think that the slide that is up now is pretty good in terms of showing the rear unit. So if we look at the, let's say, the lower of that, of where there are four elevations grouped together, and if we go to the lower right where it says existing left elevation, I think that provides a good indication, or actually, either one of those, those side elevations provide a good indication. So looking at it, the, the portion of the unit in the basement begins a little bit beyond, say, the mid-portion of that, that side elevation. So when you get to the rear, it is, as I say, substantially or almost fully at grade, and I think just on these elevations, we're not showing the existence, unfortunately, like on the right elevation, of a window that is actually in place there. But if we look on the, the floor plans, actually, if we look at the, at the slide that shows the floor plan, the proposed floor plan in the basement, what can be seen is that the portion of the unit that is in the, in, let's say, the basement begins approximately halfway back, and there is a small window for the bedroom on each side, and then a full-size window in the living room area, and then, as I say, those sliders going out. So the renderings actually do a better job. I'm sorry, I just, not being able to control the plans is a little, puts me at a bit of a disadvantage, but if we go to the area where the renderings are, they're more detailed than those elevations I was referring to, and I think if we scroll, I think we have to scroll down, they do a much better job down. George, I'm here. Do you want me to? Oh, Daniel's here. Oh, Daniel Martinez is here, and this is, this is the section I was going for. Daniel, why don't, this is Daniel Martinez from Calta Design. Daniel, why don't you take over? You're much better at this than I am.
So good afternoon, everybody. I'm Daniel Martinez, architect at K.
So good afternoon, everybody. I'm Daniel Martinez, architect at KI who worked on the plans. Basically, what we're doing for the basement is that we're actually proposing a walkout patio. Before, the patio was raised up, so it was halfway through the level. We're proposing to even that out and, you know, do a walkout patio so that the basement, the basement unit can get full light and they can get the benefits of, you know, the other units. But we're also doing that for the accessibility from the parking. If you look at the site plan or van where it's located, there's a slope that connects towards the walkout patio at a 5% slope. Yes, so if we look at the site plan on the right, P3 is our accessible van space. Once you get off the van, you can go to the slope and walkway, which has the 5% slope, and then you can get to the walkout patio. And again, because this is an existing building, the accessibility requirements are less strict. But because of the amount of parking spaces, that's why we're offering the accessible van space. And therefore, you know, the way that it worked with the site was to make Unit 2 accessible by providing a future lift location that connects to the bi-level floor.
Can you get your question? Yes, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions, Madam Chair. So I see on this plan right here, it says existing gravel area, but I think on the existing conditions, there's still like the topo line. So it's hard to understand what's existing, what's proposed with that parking area. And then I guess my second question is, you know, there's a lot of, you're losing a lot of green open space for this. And with the additional parking area for vehicles, have you considered further reducing the ratio? And is there anywhere where you've contemplated bicycle parking?
So I will answer that existing gravel parking area is relatively flat when you visit the site. There is a grade change because the principal building is located on a slope and basically it slopes down towards the other end of the site. As far as the open space, we believe that the walkout patio is a good, you know, it actually makes the open space better just because the patio that is in right now is, you know, it's not usable, you know, in terms of the materials that are there and also the space itself is not adequate. We believe that we're actually making the situation better by offering a full walkout patio that can be integrated with the unit. As far as the other aspects of the parking area, we're actually increasing the green space. Most of that is, again, gravel. We're putting a configuration that is, you know, more standard to the circulation of the cars. And therefore, we're using this to create buffers that, again, increase the landscape of the area.
And also, as we will, as George Moranci, the site now currently has parking in the back. It is basically pre-existing parking that's not legally tied to the building. In other words, it's not parking pursuant to an issued permit. It predates the code. So it's a situation that has existed. And as Daniel pointed out, we're actually increasing green space in the parking area. It was a little bit less when there were seven spaces. That owed primarily to the HP space that's being provided. We were consistent with the planning recommendation by reducing the parking to 1 to 1. And we didn't do that by removing the HP space. We believe that that's an important feature to have. But I think overall, what's happening is actually an increase in actual green space. But point taken that I think that, you know, certainly can be looked at. It, you know, maybe some of the area that now shows is pervious pavement could be more green. And that's something we would certainly be open to if this were to be approved with design review.
Great, thanks. Any bike parking?
Not currently, but we can look into it.
Is there some, is not in the basement, Daniel? I thought there might have been.
Let me just run to the plans.
And are you demolishing a number of large trees on this site? It's hard to tell where the trees belong, but it looks like there's a fair amount of large trees behind this building.
We're not proposing to cut down trees.
Thank you. Thanks.
And I think while it's not shown, I think there is adequate space in the basement with, you know, given the size of the common utility room and some of the area there. So we could certainly look at introducing bicycle storage in the basement.
With that, let's have a public testimony.
Madam Chair and Board members, C. Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This petition or completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted in a butters meeting on December 11th of 2024, at which three abutters expressed that they wanted the site to have more parking. One abutter expressed concern about the possible loss of a mature tree. There were no comments about the building design made at the butters meeting. Proposal was presented to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, which voted to support the proposal. With that background, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
We have one testimony, Annabelle Gomes.
Annabelle Gomes of the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record and support. They proposed this twice to the association and made changes that were acceptable, and we'd like to go on record and support.
Thank you. Any other ready stands?
No, that's it.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I will put forward a motion of approval with a proviso for design review with just special attention of the parking area. Any way they can, you know, further screen that, use light-colored materials so it's not, you know, asphalt? I'd really like them to consider that. And to somehow incorporate bike parking, whether it's in the common area in the basement or somewhere else.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewall?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Arkin?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1669678 with the address of 879 to 881 Blue Hill Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Yara Peña. I am the chief operating officer for El Punto Restaurant, Lounge, and Function Hall. We are here today to change the occupancy, to include live entertainment in our space and allow us to open our doors to the public. Since our last meeting, we voluntarily reduced our occupancy to 240. We have the contractor bunker security. We have our camera, emergency lights, signage, and music kill switch as asked by the fire department, train staff in agress and emergency facilities, secured rat control and trash removal services. And importantly, we've confirmed our sound levels remain within safe CD-approved decibel limits, especially for our butters on Angel Street. And we've chosen private parking for valet. And while the contract isn't signed due to 3,000 upfront costs, we'll finalize it immediately upon approval here today. And we're also offering ride-share discounts and group pickups to reduce traffic and the amount of parking because of our amount of parking spaces in the area. We have committed to monthly abutter meetings with the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council. We've met with Captain Flynn from B3 and Sergeant Joe, as well as our community safety director, Isaac, from City Hall to make sure that we are in compliance. And at this point, we are waiting for our approval.
Thank you. Thank you for those updates. Just a quick question on the valet. You mentioned the valet parking. I know there was some concern about the availability of nearby parking. How does, I guess, how does that work in conjunction with the, you know, sort of scarcity of parking?
Yeah, so we are, like I said, mentioning, we're using the backspace of A79 Blue Hill. We talked about, we have some parking in the front, and we are also considering off-street parking that is going to be done by the valet service on Blue Hill Ave.
Questions from the board?
Can you talk about your hours of operation?
Yeah, so we are requesting and we are willing to work on this by Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday to allow us to be open until 2 a.m. And then Tuesday through Thursday until 11 p.m., 3 to 11 p.m. We're not doing breakfast or lunch. We're only doing dinner and the lounge area.
So the Friday to Monday is also 3 p.m. opening?
Yes.
Okay.
Have the butters expressed any concern about the hours of operation?
They have. The Greater Neighborhood Council, they showed their support with the provision of us being open until 12 only. But I think the main concern is the parking spaces.
I think at 1 a.m., there are many parts of the city that have a 1 a.m. closing time. I think too, given that it's on a, you know, residential street, is a little excessive. So it sounds like you might be open to a 1 a.m. closing time. Okay. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the mayor's office had deferred to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process. As soon as the board is familiar, we previously had an abutters meeting on December 12th, and the applicant had met with the Mayor of Matapan Neighborhood Council after the board instructed more community process. We hosted another abutters meeting on April 9th. It was well-attended by a large number of residents on Angel Street. The applicant presented updates regarding the hiring of a bonded security company as well as their valet, valet company that would be handling parking in the rear of the building. There were a number of residents on that expressed concerns regarding the parking situation. You know, some doubted that they'd be able to fit 40 cars in the rear premise. Doubt if there would be the possibility of finding off-street parking elsewhere as well, as well as some concerns related to noise and as well as safety with residents departing the business late at night if there would be fights or other type of conflicts there. Residents have dealt in the past with cars blocking driveways for people attending unlicensed parties in the Franklin Park area. After this meeting, we received one letter in opposition. We received from, in support, we received three letters in support from the butters, 40 letters in support from Boston residents from places such as other parts of Dorchester, Roxbury, Jamaica Plain, Hyde Park, et cetera. We also received 14 letters in support from non-Boston residents from places such as Lawrence Lynn Problems. The Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council had just submitted a new letter today. I see that Fatima is on, expressing that they would support the proposal with certain provisos, you know, signed contracts, private parking, experienced valet service, signed contract with the security service, regular monthly meetings with the butters, set up with GMNC, Boston Police, and the District 4 Councilor to kind of talk through any issues that would occur later. An agreement not to have the restaurant and function hall occurring using being in operation at the same time, a decrease of the operating hours, either 10 p.m. or 11 p.m. As mentioned, the applicant talked about their security plan. Part of that was also seeking out Boston Police details on the weekends and ensuring that also other security is kind of going up and down Angel Street to make sure that there's not just issues just on the premise, but if they spill over, that they're being addressed as well. With that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Fabio?
Oh, testimony from the council's office?
Anastasia?
Hi, yes, I'm Anastasia. I'm speaking on behalf of District 4 City Councilor, Brian World. I just wanted to express that support for the project as long as they're willing to follow through on those requested provisos based on the request from the community and GMNC, including signing a contract with Pride Parking for valet services, also contracting security services, and holding monthly meetings with the butters, police in our office as well. And agreement not to have both uses of the restaurant and the function hall occurring at the same time. Thank you.
Okay, we do have six testimony. Please state your name and address for the record. Start with Fatima.
Good morning, I mean, good afternoon. My name is Fatima Salam, 34 Berna Street, Matapan. I'm the chair of Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council. I believe my letter was read by Connor already. But just to let you know, we have been speaking with Yara Peña about the area and the greatest concern to make sure that communication is constant and that we do need to pay attention to parking. We are glad that private parking, which is a very experienced valet service, they were the service that was actually used during the NCP Boston Convention in 2023. So we know that they have experience in actual parking. But because this is a residential area on private streets where people have their own private events, we also want to make sure that we strike a balance on whatever adjustments that we have to make as community members, that we hold a good neighbor policy and that we're all being open and honest with each other. We want your business to succeed. We don't want anyone to fail. And we're going to do our best to mitigate whatever issues come up during whatever process. So if there are any questions, I'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, start with Amanda.
Hey, I'm Amanda. Good afternoon, members of the board. Just wanted to say that for the record, I was, I am a director of butters and I was not notified of this meeting. Just wanted to state that Angel Street is predominantly residential area. It's a home of many families, children, seniors, and working individuals that rely on a peaceful environment. Just introducing a nightclub with live entertainment would bring late noise, traffic congestion, public intoxication, parking shortages, and potentially increased crime, which would drastically degrade our quality of life. This type of business is compatible with our current zoning and land use of our community. We believe that permitting a nightclub and live entertainment establishment would set a presence that could undermine the stability and cohesion of our neighborhood. So we on Angel Street are mostly concerned with the noise pollution, the traffic and parking. And I know at the last abutters meeting, they were supposed to show pictures of the parking area in the back with the lines of where the parking is going to be and also the spots that they're talking about in the front. And I have not seen the area where the valet plans on parking these cars. The photo that they show, that the photo that was shown in the beginning does not show the area in the back. There is a lot in the back, but there are no lines, and it's a small area. And property value, just the presence of a nightclub can make the area less desirable for families or quiet living, potentially lowering surrounding property values. Safety, litter, and vandalism is also a big concern. Residential zones are intended for peaceful living. A nightclub introduces, a nightclub introduces a commercial high activity presence. Our community on Angel Street is committed to preserving the safety. Our community on Angel Street is committed to preserving the safety, peace, and residential integrity of our neighborhood. Many residential zones have regulations that restrict commercial establishments like nightclubs to preserve community quality of life, and we ask that you stand with us on protecting ours. Um, I know that they had talked about, um,
Please wrap up. We do have other things.
Okay. I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I think those are all my.
Thank you.
That's it, yeah.
Thank you. We'll go to Kimberly. Okay, we'll move on to Jerome Frazier.
Uh, thank you. I'm Jerome Frazier, West End Festival. I'm a one-time resident of, uh, Roxbury, Rochester. Thank you so much. I'm not sure what meeting, um, you were attending, uh, but we were close to fifteen people at the last meeting. And, uh, the fifteen people were very adamant of not supporting this. Um, and there is no supporters on Angel Street in the suburban areas. Um, I literally went to every house, Dr. Yona, and it was always on the phone. There's no one supporting this, um, venture. And, you know, I, I, I do admire the sorties, uh, but the sorties, I just want you to know that Nicholas and Earl, and Yona's, uh, uh, what does Spring Capital and PW Development make concessions and promises? It's not true. They do not, they do not own the, um, uh, tire shop that is owned by, uh, another organization, which has nothing to do with, with PW Development. And it's, it's imperative that we understand that right now, at, at this point, um, there's a lot of misrepresentation. The parking, which they had initially spoke to at the church, the pastor sent a letter in, it was along with twenty letters to the, um, uh, city, which are documented, that the parking is not allowed. So there's a lot of statements that are made, and not on your behalf, the sorties, it's what you've been told. It's not true. There's no parking in the area. There's none at the, at, um, Cabot Inn, the Boys Club, all that area there, Angel Street. There is nothing available for, um, what, what you spoke on as, um,
Uh, please wrap up.
Okay, I will, I will. Um, parking for a, a valet. And the, the last thing I want to say is, which is, which is imperative, that a lot of the promising of housing around, around, that we've been promised with this owner, right? Um, what they did in Brighton and other areas of the city. I mean, you know, labor has been important in hiring people that are not residents, that are not living in the city. Just like you said, you got letters from other areas of, of the city. You've got no letters from, from, from residents in that area. And that's my point. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can you just be brief?
We'll go to, uh, Cardriani.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair and Board. Uh, my name is, uh, Sistika Ibrion. I live at ten Vester Road. I've been living here for thirty-one years. I'm the founder of the Vester Road Community Revitalization Block Party. We're looking forward to celebrating our tenth annual block party, um, this year. And the purpose of the block, block party has been to combat the violence in the inner city so that we can have a peaceful, um, community. And along with the help of the city, uh, we have accomplished improving, um, Vester Road. And, uh, we would like to continue to have, uh, a peaceful residence. So I'm in opposition to it. I'd like to also speak about, um, a couple of years ago, that there was an illegal, um, after hour across the street from, from, uh, my house here on Vester Road. It was, uh, related to one of the businesses on, on, um, uh, Blue Hill Ave. And, um, um, individuals would come out of that, that establishment four or five o'clock in the morning, making all kinds of noise. And there was one occasion when I spoke up and said, you know, people live on the street and there are elderly people and people with disabilities, and we need to get our sleep so that we can, you know, we can get up the next day and do the things that we need to do. This individual said, I don't care because I don't live here. And, you know, this has been, uh, the sentiment of three, uh, problem properties on, uh, that's, that's connected to Vester Road. Uh, the building on the corner of the street, for thirty years, we've been working with the city to try to, um, rectify the unsanitary conditions there, um, the, um, loud, loud noise.
Please wrap up, ma'am.
And, um, so we're in opposition to this, uh, as well as, uh, because of the parking as a disabled individual, um, who catches the ride. Uh, we've had, I've experienced issues with the ride making the U-turn on Blue Hill Ave because of the double parking that happens, as well as finding, you know, a place to let the ramp down when I'm on my street. So, um, we're in opposition to this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, yes, you passed over me. Um, my name is Kimberly Anderson, and I am a resident of Angel Street. And I'm also opposed of the nightclub, um, mainly because of the parking. Uh, we have handicap parking in front of our house and, um, if there's, if, and if there is no residential parking on anything for our street, that means that we're going to have issues where people park it in our spots. Also, it's the safety of the street. Um, we're going to have so many different people walking up and down Angel Street at night intoxicated and they're going to want to hang out and they're going to be hanging out on Angel Street. And also the trash. Um, people throwing trash, uh, on, you know, on the, um, on the street.
Um, thank you. Thank you. So we've heard trash, we've heard, uh, parking issues.
Gloria, I'm going to ask.
Please, please ask. I'm sorry, Flavio, can you keep us moving?
Sure. Let's move on to Yolanda.
Hello, my name is, uh, good afternoon. My name is Yolanda Stinson, and I am a resident of Angel Street for over twenty years. And I just wanted to make it noted that I am in opposition of this project. Um, I am not in agreeance with the project at all, actually. I am very concerned with our safety. And yes, of course, the parking, because we already have issues with parking. But the safety of this is even more, um, un, unheartening. It's very concerning to me that the late nights, that this let-out will happen. Um, I'm just, I do, I oppose it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Move on to Loretta.
Hi, my name is Loretta, and I'm also a resident, um, on Vester Road as well. And first I want to say that a lot of things, like she said, that they own the tire shop, they do not own the tire shop, so they cannot park at the tire shop. And again, like, um, Cardrin was saying, with the noise, and when you walk up there early in the morning, you see people coming out like four, five in the morning, when you're trying to go to work and they're making all this noise. That's, we don't need this. Again, we just need some peace and quiet. We don't need a club. We need peace. If they want to have a club, something, they should go.
Yolanda, we're, we're losing you.
Maybe the brand office had a place that was available with, um, the, um, the bars or whatever. That's a nice place. It's available.
I think we need to move on and maybe come back to Yolanda.
She's breaking up.
Flavio?
To have that place. And we look so much.
Flavio, there's other race, night community and all that argument. We have to hear and invest, um, Blue Hill Avenue was loud.
They had everything at night. So we really don't want all this noise around our area and, and there's no parking as it is.
Thank you.
And there's no resident, I mean, we don't have a permit parking, so we have to have a hard time.
Thank you.
Yolanda, we have to move on now.
We don't want this in our area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Mary Greenway.
Hi, I'm Mary Greenaway, and I'm a resident of Angel Street for over twenty years. And I'm concerned like everyone else about the parking and the safety. It's really, especially in the summertime, we have, um, the party at the top of the street on, uh, American Legion where the crowd come and they block all the spaces. Sometimes I can't even come home because there's no place for me to park. And I have, um, I run a childcare program, which is really, um, an issue, uh, for the buses when they're dropping kids off. Plus, I have, um, my own grandchildren that's in the area, they're young children, and, um, I'm really concerned. The trash is a problem. And, um, you know, the nightclub, the restaurant, I could kind of support, but definitely the nightclub. I cannot support the nightclub.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Ramavir.
Hi, Karen.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Please be brief and let us know if you're in support or opposition.
Yes, uh, my name's, uh, Ramon Bursany, uh, owner of, uh, Seventeen Mascot Street. It's about a ten, fifteen-minute walk down, uh, to, uh, El Punto. Uh, I am in, uh, support of this project. Uh, I think it'd be a unique opportunity, especially for this part of the city where we really don't have something like this.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a, a phone number, and then, three, six, eight, nine. Boy, identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Stacy, and I'm a butter of this prop, of this project, and I just want to say that I'm opposed to it. Um, again, it's the same issue. Mine is Stacy, um, also the parking, the noise control, trash, rodents. Um, we don't need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a last hand up with an iPhone. There's no name. Can you identify yourself?
How's it going? My name is Roberto Gastro. I re, I'm resident of fifty-six Torrey Street, Dorchester. Um, I stand in possession of support. Um, again, I've, I heard everybody's comment, as in their concerns, parking, um, safety. Again, if the company, as the business owner, can like provide, as they said, safety, like they, they speak to Boston PD, they have professional valet, as again, those, I don't feel like that would be a major concern because if they're already providing valet, they just have to worry about where they're going to park. But it's also support, hasn't, because everybody's saying like the noise, the music, it's a, it's a posi-, it's a, and they're talking about the illegal businesses. This is a chance and opportunity because Boston is expanding for new opportunities, new business, for where business like this can open up and they can minimize, they can minimize, they can minimize the illegal business where people just want to have a function. There's a, if, if there's a legal function where people can interact and enjoy themselves, it would minimize the illegal functions, the late night and all that, because they have something to do. As in, in the summer, if there's nothing to do, people are just going to find illegal things to do because they don't, there isn't as much function in Boston as in London. That's, this is opening up. So it's a good opportunity for the city and for those who are looking for functions to interact in, in a place where they can legally, with a reasonable time hour, interact with their friends and family. If there's more functions like this in Boston, I'm pretty sure it'll minimize the illegal functions and the illegal activities. So I'm in support. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Morgan Sayimi.
Okay, please keep it brief. Last two hands.
And we'll move on to Danielle.
Hi. Hello, hi. I live on Angel Street, I'm opposing the club. Um, I have a young daughter and I really think it will be dangerous to the area. And again, with the parking, um, people will be blocking driveways like everyone else is saying. And I also wanted to, maybe you can ask them, when they say valet, where will they be putting the cars? Are they going to be putting them, they're saying they're not going to put them on Angel Street. Are they going to put them on Blue Hill? Because I don't really understand how you can valet with the little space that they have.
Thank you. Thanks. There are other people who continue to have comments. If you could put them in the chat. We'll take one more.
Uh, that concludes the, uh, testimony.
No, I, I'm, I'm, for four and a half hour waiting for.
Please.
My name is Melagros Monte, working for Hispanic radio station, TV, and newspaper. And I'm here to support, and I understand all concern or, or neighborhood back, but at the same time that people have almost a deal that I have, working hard, try to dream a building in this area. They follow the rules, they go step by step, and recommendation by recommendation from the city of Boston. I think that they deserve the opportunity to show us that they can handle a good business, and I'm here to strongly support. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, with that, we'll give the, um, applicant an opportunity to respond. I know there's a, a lot of things that, uh, you had mentioned earlier that have been mentioned. So if you just, uh, whatever, um, I just want to give you the opportunity to respond.
Yes, I know, um, that, like I said, the parking, I know, we understand it is a concern. We are trying to avoid Angel Street as much as, as possible. Uh, we are going to u-, utilize the spaces that we have in the back, but we are not using Angel Street to valet park. We never said that we owned, um, the tire shop, but we do have spaces that correspond to the building, A seventy-nine to A eighty-one that we could park on in front of the building, and we could do valet parking there as well. Um, I never, we never talked to any other churches or the Boys and Girls Club for the parking spaces. So I don't know where that miss, that information came from, and I thought we cleared that up on the, the last abutters meeting. Um, like Melagros said, we just want the opportunity to open and if, you know, and adjust. We have complied with occupancy, we had complied with the time. Um, so it's just for you guys to give us the opportunity to run a space. Um, our staff is trained, um, from the server to us, as ma-, as the management team in crowd control and, um, um, tip certifications on how to cut off people that are getting excessively drinking over their a, a, amount of li-, uh, limit. We have, um, with the noise control, um, on, there's no noise that will be able to go to Angel Street. Like we play the music to the max and inside of the premises, and we did a decimal test and it doesn't get to Angel Street. Um, so with that said, we, we, we just want the opportunity to open.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, are there other questions from the board?
Madam, sure, I still have one question. I think I'm not clear exactly on where, where are the proposal for hours of operation. Um, there was a discussion here about two AM, one AM. I think you have Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council that suggested ten or eleven. Uh, so trying to understand is that the last piece, really appreciate all the feedback that, uh, people have offered on this proposal.
Ms. Pena, do you want to give?
Yes, so Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, um, we would like to be open until eleven PM. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, we would like, um, to take the suggestion from the board and close at one, which will be twelve-thirty. Everybody needs to be off the premises by one.
Ms. Pena, may I ask why Monday?
Uh, it's just a Latino thing, but we could, uh, kick it back to eleven.
Uh, uh, understood. Thank you. Uh, any other, does that answer your question, Mr. Iguodala? Uh, okay, Alan?
Okay, I'm sorry. I just had one slight question, because it seemed like the, um, Angel Street, people that live on Angel Street that don't want the nightclub, is there any way possible that you could probably open up the restaurant without the nightclub, if that's possible?
Sure, but for the city of Boston, if I'm not mistaken, anything under fifty is considered a nightclub. And our capacity went down from three fifty-one to two forty, um, and, and that's including the function hall. Um, so it has reduced, um, for a large amount, but it's still under the city code, over fifty is a nightclub.
I, I understand that too, but I'm just saying somehow, some way, the restaurant sounds like a wonderful idea. Better find a way to accommodate, some, somehow accommodate the people that lived on Angel Street. Because I know if I was on Angel Street, I might not be too happy of a nightclub because it brings, and late at night, it brings a different type of people. That's the only thing I, that's all I need to say.
Thank you.
Can I say something? Um, Antonia, Antonia, you're, if I'm planning the committee.
So this is the time for the board members to, to deliberate. Are there any other comments or questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I just want to clear something up with the hours. So has this applicant been to the licensing board yet? I just wouldn't want to put anything in our decision that they really kind of, um, governed. I just wouldn't wanna put anything in our decision that they really kind of, um, governed.
Ms. Penya, the question is just where are you in process, uh, in terms of the, the licensing hours?
So we have done the whole process through ISC to bring us here.
So you still need to go to the licensing board? For the restaurant?
I think his question has to do with the hours. If we put in a proviso about hours, I think she's wondering if that contradicts something that you've already had approved.
Well, our licenses for the, like for the liquor license is until two AM. But we're willing to lower it if that's the case.
So, and Ms. Weewell, procedurally, I mean, you know, communities and, and restaurants and other businesses have, have made provisos that, uh, you know, are shorter than the duration of a license.
I understand. Um, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Are we ready for a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval. Uh, I think for reasons stated in the planning memo that Blue Hill Ave is a major commercial corridor and the location in this neighborhood business sub-district, um, sort of lends itself to being an appropriate location for this use.
I'd like to add some provisos to that, if I may. Um, so I would wanna see that the, because of the occupancy on the plans is three hundred and fifty-two, I believe. So proviso that they reduce occupancy to two hundred and forty. Um, that they, um, uh, agreed on monthly meetings with the, with the neighbors, um, to deal with any quality of life issues. And that they sign a security contract and give the neighbors, um, contact information to call with any kind of emergencies or issues. Um, and that they sign a, um, contract with the valet service.
Anything on hours?
And I think, and on the hours, right, I think, I think this, I think I'm up to five. Um, and hours that they, uh, close on Friday, Saturday, Sunday at, at one AM. And, um, the other nights close at eleven AM. Eleven, sorry, eleven, eleven PM and, and a one AM closing on those weekend nights.
Ms. Weewell? You're muted.
Said, sure. Um, I think I take a pretty narrow view of the zoning criteria, but I'm amenable to Ms. Panato's, um, motion to second with those provisos if the applicant agrees to those.
Okay, uh, Mr. Stunbridge.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Wangum?
I like the ideal about the restaurant, but the nightclub I don't, so I'm gonna vote no.
Mr. Aiken?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, ma'am. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five seven eight zero nine four with the address of two eighteen Bremen Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Is our applicant on for two eighteen Bremen Street? Flavio, do you see, uh, Mohammed Hayek in the, I see him. Mr. Hayek, are you able to unmute yourself or Flavio, do you need to unmute?
Yeah, can you hear me? I'm sorry. Hi.
Oh, yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Hi, Madam Chair and Board Member. How you doing? My name is Mohammed Hayek. I've owned the property at two eighteen Bremen Street for the last, um, over twenty years. Um, we were at the board last month. However, there was a mistakenly done on by the architect. He did not, um, incorporate pre-existing condition of the rear deck. So this is the property highlighted by the color orange. And this is a, a fourth floor addition proposal to pre-existing three family, which would change the, um, the, um, um, the, um, capacity to do four family. Um, next slide, please, if you don't mind. Um, next one, please. So, um, the, over here, if you could zoom in a little bit on the left side of the, in the middle of the block plan, the pre-existing rear deck and the Porsches. They were missing the last time. We submitted the plan last month. And one of the board members had, uh, asked the pre-existing condition to be listed on the block plan, which we did. And I also provided some photo pictures of the rear of the decks. So next, uh, next slide, please. Okay, these are the decks, uh, the Porsches in the back. You can see them, three Porsches. And the deck which is existing right now, a twenty by twenty-five. So the new proposal will take down all these Porsches and the deck. And will reconstruct a, an addition in the back of the house. And re-erect the Porsches smaller, um, with a smaller, um, dimensions than they are right now. Next slide, please, if you don't mind. And the, um, the, uh, distance between the, uh, rear structure and the rear fence with the neighbor will stay at eight feet, which is pre-existing right now, as you can see. Also far in the picture down about five street, five houses down. You can see one of the houses has already extended their, uh, living space in the back, which I'm doing the same thing just about. And I'm keeping the three fa- the three, the eight feet from the back face of my back neighbor as it exists right now. Next slide, please. I'm just gonna go really briefly, just to refresh your memory. Whatever you see in the, in the yellow is the proposed, um, addition for each floor, first, second, third. And the, uh, the far right diagram is the fee for the fourth floor addition of a two bedroom plus one and a half bath. And your approval for this project will be greatly appreciated because it really needs to be, uh, replaced. The Porsches are needs a, a new facelift to, uh, be coherent with the facelift of the whole neighborhood that be in modern, more modern look lately. And the neighborhood's been done like almost ninety percent of houses. And I also provided some, the, uh, next slide, please, to show you some of the, uh, the project that was done. This is a overview project of the, of the project from the back and the rear and the front. Next slide, please. I wanna show you some examples that already existed on the, uh, on the same street, Bremen Street, all these project. Where the address is right there on Bremen Street before me and after down the street from me. And we also did the same setback on the fourth floor addition by eight feet. Like a, did like a small balcony to be coherent with all the neighbors who did the fourth floor additions. So it'll be all blended within the new neighborhood look. Thank you so much. If you have any questions, please, I'd be more glad then to help you, please.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding two eighteen Bremen Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. Community process was conducted, including at a budgets meeting held on four sixteen twenty-four, which was attended by two constituents. The primary feedback from this meeting was opposition to the proposal citing the character of the neighborhood and construction noise, while the other attendees did not express opposition or support. I've also received a petition against the proposal citing loss of green space and the precedent being set in the neighborhood density as well as lack of parking. This was signed by ten, by ten of butters. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association, which convened on six nineteen twenty-four. The association has ultimately voted in opposition to the proposal. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
You. Good afternoon, members of the board. In last year, Councilor Coleta Zapata met with the Abadis neighbors in person and they were displeased with the death of the project as they felt it would be too close to the property line and to their own properties and claimed it would be detrimental to the character and well-being of the neighborhood. The Abadis requested a meeting with the proponent to make their votes heard and as of yesterday, they claimed this did not happen. Additionally, Councilor Coleta Zapata met with the proponents and highlighted the importance of speaking with the neighbors and making changes based on their conversations. To provide additional context, the proponent presented the council with five letters of support and the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association were in opposition. Lastly, the council would like to make sure that this project adheres to planning in Boston and request that the board does the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing, if I may?
Um. Mr. Semenali has his hand up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's finish public comments first, Mr. Semenali.
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. Christian Semenali, Boston Raoul Trust, and we have both G卡 letters from the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hayek, were you, did you wanna add something?
Yeah, I, I, one, one of the concern, they were talking about green space. I'm only, I'm reconstructing what already pre-existed and taking all the structure down and bringing a new structure into place. So there is no, um, no loss of the green space at all. As a matter of fact, I'm gonna be planting some trees in the back of the house after the new structure is being erected. If you guys approve it, hopefully. And as far as the butter, my right, left and back butter, I talked to them. They said they, they would go with whatever, whatever the board sees fits in the neighborhood. So I'm only doing what already, already been done in the neighborhood. It's not that I'm introducing a new idea to the neighborhood. The whole neighborhood has been changed to the better. Almost ninety percent of structures in the neighborhood has been done a fourth floor or has been redeveloped, um, completely by taking down the old structure and, and new structure, like I showed, and now, now some of the addresses that I've provided. Thank you. So just keep that in mind would be great. Thank you so much.
Can we have Mr. Hampton? I, I know that we try to adhere to planning East Boston, but I'd love to hear it from the planning department.
Mr. Hampton?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Jeff Hampton, uh, City of Boston Planning Department. If you saw, I recommend, we recommended denial without prejudice. And that was, uh, originally because, as you saw, we're not a fan with the flood, flood elevations. We don't wanna see any of the, uh, living space in the basement. Uh, we have been consistent about opposing that, uh, ever since this has become an issue with, uh, some of the appeals. Uh, the other is the addition, um, you know, this was done under the old zoning, under the old three F two thousand. So this is what we're basing our decision on. And we feel that the extension into the rear yard should try to adhere to the rear yard setback as much as we can. Um, and we think that the addition is just too big right now. So for those reasons, we're on the record for denial without prejudice.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Uh, just a comment. I think that Mr. Hampton helped me understand particularly about the rear yard, uh, which wasn't clear in any of this. And I don't believe that a facelift to a building necessarily requires then, uh, going against a number of other, uh, planting and zoning advisory, uh, items.
Okay, so with that, is there, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I will put forward a motion of denial without prejudice for, you know, all of the reasons Mr. Hampton stated. You know, they're, they were missing, uh, the finished first floor elevation. So to kind of get a sense of whether it's some, um, low sea level or, um, so, yeah, denial without prejudice for those reasons. And it should come closer into compliance with the new zoning standards.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge. Mr. Stunbridge? Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Wangum?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.